There we are. Welcome to the October 21st Planning Commission meeting. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Johnson is absent. And let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Per the city's meeting rules and procedures, public comments are generally limited to five minutes or less time if a large number of speakers is anticipated or if approved by the chair. We'll do five minutes tonight. Speakers desiring answers to questions should direct them to the Planning Commission, and if relevant, the Commission may direct them to staff. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. Please file a speaker's card with the Administrative Secretary on the form provided at the back of the chambers. During this portion of the meeting, those in the council chambers are permitted to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Public comments for scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. Zoom participation during this general public comment period will not be accepted. And please note that the Commission's actions are final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk within 10 calendar days. April?
Through the chair, we have no speaker cards for those here in person.
All right, thank you. Our next item is the consent calendar. There's one set of minutes for the regular meeting of September 16th, 2025. Is there any discussion or do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the consent calendar. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move into our first item. It's in public hearings, E1. It's conditional use permit for unwind yoga and meditation located at 3870 Balfour Road, Suite D, within the City Block Commercial Center. An application for a conditional use permit, CUP 25-008, to allow for a yoga studio known as Unwind Yoga and Meditation to occupy and operate within an 897 square foot tenant space located at 3870 Balfour Road, Suite D, APN 010-110-019. Miguel?
Thank you, Chairperson Flores. Miguel with the City of Brentwood Planning Division. I'm here to present a conditional use permit, 25-008, for unwind yoga and meditation, which is proposing to locate at 3870 Balfour Road, Suite D. The site has a general plan designation of general commercial. It's within the PD 69 zoning district, and it's also within the City Block Commercial Center. The specific request is to establish a yoga studio, which would occupy 897 square foot tenant space. The yoga studio would have an 18-person maximum occupancy, which would include guests and instructors. The requested hours of operation or on the projector, they vary throughout the week, and staff has actually included a draft condition to limit hours from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. That way, it offers the applicant greater flexibility. And just in case someday they want to have a Saturday session at 3:00, they don't have to come back to the Planning Commission to modify those hours of operation. The project would be consistent with the general commercial and general plan designation. It would also be consistent with the PD 69 zoning district. And the project does qualify for a Class 1 and a Class 32 categorical exemption for existing facilities and infill. Staff would recommend that the Planning Commission adopt as condition Resolution Number 25-016, thus approving the conditional use permit Number 25-008. That would conclude staff presentation.
Does the Planning Commission have any clarifying questions for staff? Anybody?
I don't at this time.
Not at this time. Okay. All righty. And at this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant, who will have 10 minutes. Does the applicant wish to address the Commission? Okay. Does the Planning Commission have any questions of the applicant? No? Okay. And this time, we have public speakers. April, do we have any public speakers?
At this time, we have no speakers here in person, so we'll go to Zoom. If you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Chairperson, we have no hands raised in Zoom.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No mood.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Is there any discussion by the Commission, or Chairman Roberts?
Not at this time. Just an observation that that area seems to be, having read the documentation, an area where there is quite a bit of exercise and/or activity relative to one's physical piece. You've got yoga, you've got karate. I think something related to gymnastics or something like that. So it's kind of cute in that it's, that space is coming together quite nicely for something that is healthy in the community. So that's all I have on that. I noticed that.
Cool. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, no, I've looked at the staff report, the supportive materials. I agree. I mean, I think it's a good compatible use for the commercial center, consistent with the general plan. No anticipating traffic, parking impacts, low intensity, well maintained. And yeah, it's turning into a health spot. So, but I'm supportive of the staff recommendation.
Vice Chair, Brad?
Yeah, echoing what my other fellow commissioners had described. The, I believe this is one of the first tenants for this building as well, or at least proposed because everyone always talks about this building. It's like, what's in there? I would propose that the, I believe Miguel commented that they made a draft approval, draft condition for the extension of the hours to 10:00 p.m. in the event that they wanted to extend beyond. So I'd offer that as a possibility for, as part of a motion, as well as... Oh, no, that's it. Okay, thank you.
I thank you all. That sounds like a good idea to me. A healthy area in the city, that's kind of a cool idea. And I read over the application and listening to all the discussion. I have full support of this item as well. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-016, approving conditional use permit Number 25-008, subject to certain findings and conditions, including the 10:00 p.m. operation time. Yeah.
And do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Welcome to Brentwood. And that has to be the shortest item we've had in quite a while. All right. Moving on to an item that may not be quite so short. Text amendments to, this is item E2. Text amendments to the Brentwood Municipal Code related to the adoption of objective design standards for residential and mixed-use development needed to comply with state law as required by the city's adopted housing element implementation policies. Jennifer?
Thank you. We are here tonight in collaboration with JZMK Partners to present the text amendments to our municipal code related to the adoption of objective design standards for residential and mixed-use developments, which we call our ODS. Tonight's brief presentation will be given by Drew Watkins, and we also have Tim Hagan on the line, both from JZMK, who are joining us tonight via Zoom. We hope that over the past month, you've had additional time to review the draft ODS, as they are very lengthy and detailed. And with our consultant team, we are here tonight to assist you in any way possible so we can make sure that your comments and concerns may clearly be articulated to the City Council at the end of tonight's discussion, hopefully. And with that, we'd like to hand it over to Drew, who's joining us via Zoom, and he can share his screen.
Great, thanks, Jennifer, and thank you, Commissioners, for having us here this evening. I'm going to share my screen. We have just a very brief presentation, and then expect that we can go into detail on various aspects of the ODS. I'm going to make this full screen. Okay. So why are we here? We're reviewing progress to date on the current draft of the Objective Development Standards, or the ODS. And what we're really looking for is your comments and recommendations on this document. We've gotten some feedback from a presentation that was done about a month ago. We've gotten some additional feedback since then. And so we're looking kind of for cohesive feedback to look at alterations to the ODS as we bring that to City Council. And so what are the goals of the ODS itself? It's really to create a clear set of citywide regulations for multifamily and single-family residential development. It looks to preserve the character of Brentwood. It creates standards that result in buildings that are appropriate to their context and environment. It encourages human-scale buildings, promotes high-quality site and building design, and emphasizes a pedestrian-oriented environment. We started this process really back in 2023. We did a study session with City Council in 2000, right at the end of 2023, and then really went into the process of drafting the document. A public review draft was shared in April, and we then introduced the ODS to the Land Use Development Committee and finally did a review with you last month, just over a month ago, an initial review. And so now we're hoping that we can get some specific feedback. And some of the comments we've already gotten deal with roof materials, specifically whether we should require... specifically whether we should require tile roofs on, on all buildings. We've also discussed maybe masonry is a more flexible term, about something, you know, a very durable roof material. We've also gotten some good comments on contemporary architecture style, whether that's really appropriate anywhere in the city, maybe PA-one. So looking for your, your feedback on that. And then, you know, are there areas where we should increase our objectivity within the architectural style chapter? This is always a balance in that chapter between providing enough specificity that we know what we're getting, but also providing some flexibility where appropriate. And so if there's, if you have direction on areas where you'd like to see more specificity, that, that's something that we'd enjoy hearing from you as well. So some of the next steps, Planning Commission provides recommendations to the City Council on how to, on what changes should be made to the draft ODS. And then we will work to create a final draft to bring to council for consideration and their input during subsequent public hearings.
So thank you. And with that, staff, again, we just wanted to reiterate the amount of work that has been put into drafting the ODS so far. This has been a long and thorough process, which started by taking the initial two thousand and six initial residential design guidelines and carrying over all applicable guidelines to these new guidelines. This included areas such as the allowable roofing material, which currently, which previously encouraged roof tiles, but also allowed for various roofing materials based on specific architectural styles. The draft document before you tonight was not changed after our initial discussion at the last meeting, based on your request. And as Drew indicated, we have provided you with different options on the initial three discussion topics outlined in the agenda report. Staff is here tonight to insist in any way possible to make sure your comments and concerns can clearly be articulated to the City Council. And we are here to go over the topics you previously discussed, as well as any other additional topics that you would like to go over tonight. And with that, that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate that. At this time, we're going to see if the Planning Commission has any clarifying questions. And I just want to remind the commission, these are clarifying questions for the presentation, because I'm sure that there's going to be quite a bit of discussion tonight, and staff will be involved in that discussion. So with that, does anybody have clarifying questions for staff? No? No? All right. At this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person. April?
At this time, we have no speaker cards for those here. We're going to go ahead and go to Zoom. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. I have one hand raise, A. Icon.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. I just have a question about fire resilience. It seems to be a big issue for insurance and also from a governance perspective in the state. And I was wondering what considerations were made in the architectural styles and considerations.
Go ahead, Ms. Icon. If you have any other further comments, please make them during your time.
That's it. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, do you want to answer that question quickly?
This was briefly discussed at the last meeting. We did not include it in the staff report. I don't believe there was enough to have an outline of it, but obviously, we can talk about it more at your direction. But staff did include a requirement to include an ember-resistant zone within five feet of all structures located in the very high fire severity zone in the most recent state fire hazard severity zone maps and the state responsibility areas. We also have conditions in here that refer back to the Contra Costa Fire Department, as well as all the state fire districts. What our five-foot area that we included for the fi, for the very high fire severity zone, it's mouthful. It's consistent currently with state guidelines and our county guidelines. As we talked before, if we want to be a little bit more proactive, we can maybe have it go down to, instead of just the very high areas, to the high areas. And there are multiple options that we can go, but currently, we have a five-foot requirement for all areas within the very high fire severity zones.
Thank you, Jennifer. And if the caller wants to stick around for a while, the, I think the, those, those provisions are in the last chapter of the ODS, so we'll probably be getting to them sometime later. But that was a pretty good summary. All right.
Through the chair, that speaker has raised their hand again.
They have additional time?
They do.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Icon.
Hi, apologies. I think there are a lot of more considerations to just the five-foot clearance. There's also the ember-resistant filters on the fireplaces, burning standards, the kinds of vegetation that's used in the community, et cetera, et cetera. It's really a much broader topic than just the five-foot zone. So I think this is worth a lot of investigation in the community, because we're already starting to hear that our insurance is going up because we're near a, you know, a non-functioning golf course with lots of dead grass. We used to be in a really safe zone, and this is going to have a lot of impact on the community. I'm done.
I just want to comment again to the, to the caller that in addition to the, the safe zone, there is discussion in the, in the document in front of us about water-tolerant plants that can help with that. Also, this is design, and so a lot of what is covered as far as fire safety is actually in the Fire Code, which flows down from the state through the County Fire Department, and would be a subject that you would find out more about in the Brentwood Municipal Code. And there is more, but the, the area of discussion tonight is more about design elements, and will be more about appearance and materials. And, but we are always mindful of fire here, so I do appreciate the comment. April, do we have any others?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, we're going into discussion by the commission. And before we start, I, I know I took quite a lot of notes, and I think probably if I know my commissioners, there's probably going to be a lot of individual recommendations possibly for revisions or items that we're going to want to look at possibly incorporating into some kind of a resolution. And Jennifer, if I could impose on you again to keep a list for us, and that makes it possible for, for you to display that list from time to time, and so the public and ourselves can, can keep track.
Absolutely. I have it ready and waiting.
Thank you so much. All right. All right, discussion by the commission. Anita, do you want to start? I mean, former Chair Roberts?
Well, I would recommend that we maybe go chapter by chapter so that we don't hop around too much. And to that end, the first chapter, I don't have any comments on.
That seems like a doable thing. Is the rest of the commission amenable to doing it chapter by chapter?
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're on, so we're on the introduction. Commissioner Jones, you have anything on the introduction?
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Vice Chair Brand?
No, it's pretty straightforward. Almost identical, I think, to the, the first one.
Okay. Well, I, I kind of had something on the table of contents that we'll, we'll touch on more when we get to chapter four. So I'll stick a note in that, but I do have some notes on the introduction. The purpose in the new introduction, and maybe before I get into this, is I, I want to ask a question, Abby, Jennifer. In the process of producing the new document, was a lot of reference made to the old document? Was it, was it like you took the old document and then went from there? Or was it kind of a, a fresh start or some combination of that?
It was, it was not a fresh start. It was more of a combination. What we did is we looked at other cities and best practices, and then we looked at what we had in our current design guidelines and what has worked, and really what the essence of, of our city was and our residential character that we want to maintain. And so, similar to, well, so our current design standards, we didn't have architectural styles in it. So that was something we looked around. Not all cities include architectural styles in their objective design standards. Some just say, you know, you have to have step backs or different window treatments or trims. But they're not as specific as architectural styles. And we felt that it was very important to include that in these so we can maintain some of our current characteristics and neighborhood characteristics. So that is one thing that is new. We went around and we looked at what we felt was mostly used, and, and we had that kind of as our base. But then in terms of site planning and neighborhood planning and single versus second story, you know, or one and two-story, single-family neighborhoods, we looked at what we had in our existing guidelines, and we took those directly from there and made them objective where we could and added those in as well. So it definitely is a collaboration of our existing guidelines and, and new and best practices.
Thank you. So I guess the reason why I was asking that question, I'm, I'm looking at the, the purpose statement in the overview. And in, in the new ODS, the, the purpose statement basically talks about the legal environment. And there were a lot of things that, in the original design guidelines, that I think might have got lost a little bit, that I thought were, were valid and valuable. Things about the, the context about the city of Brentwood being rapidly growing. Community expectations. We, we care a lot about what our community thinks needs to be done. The, the goals and purpose, I think that you have, have some of that. But I, I just, for example, when I look here at basic design principles, principle number nine says, "Use quality materials and craftsmanship, high-quality, state-of-the-art materials and design that will maintain their appearance over time and convey a sense of pride in one's homes shall be used on all new construction." And they will also reduce long-term capital costs. And this has been my, my focus on, for instance, the roof tiles, is, is I want to use roof tiles that will last. And that, I, I see that reflected in here. And I just didn't, I didn't see any of this kind of material. It's kind, there is some stuff scattered through the document, but the introductory document, I thought, could have used a little bit more about Brentwood and not just about. The purpose of this document is not just to respond to a, to a state mandate. I mean, we, we are redoing the document in response to the state mandate. Nonetheless, we have design standards for more reasons than just that. So that would be my first comment on the introduction. See if I have any more. And so the goals that we have are fine. Preserve the character of Brentwood's neighborhoods, encourage human-scale buildings, emphasize pedestrian-oriented environment. But I thought the inclusion of some of the old design principles would strengthen this document if we, if we provide the reasons why we're doing things that, and I, I should, if I have it here in front of me, I, I always like, when I discuss this, I always like to start off by reading the one or two lines from the law that really have us doing this. I had it in front of me somewhere. Anyway, the, the, the one thing that we are required to do is provide reasonable and objective design standards. And objective just means that there's not a lot of room for interpretation, that, that you can easily understand what it is you're supposed to do. And that's something I really support, actually. Reasonable is a little bit harder, you know? Who knows what any one person, two people can disagree on what's reasonable, what's not. And so I thought having a little bit more of why we're doing things in the introduction would strengthen that reasonability and make things a little bit more defensible. There is a listing in here of the styles that's in the introduction. And I think I'll save that comment from when we get into the styles. And so those would be my comments on the introduction. Okay. With that, let's go on to Chapter Two, Site Planning. Right Chair Roberts, do you have anything?
I'm good with Chapter Two as well. It's pretty laid out. I have no issues with Chapter Two either.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
I'm the same. Thank you.
And Vice Chair Brand?
Yeah, nothing further here.
Oh. Perhaps predictably, I have a few notes scattered through here. Looking at Section two-five-two, the required public open space. And it makes a mention that the open space quantity may include the city's park dedication requirements, but it doesn't say much more than that. May include, doesn't, doesn't really tell you much about our park dedication requirements. These, these requirements are percentages of the site. Our park requirements, I believe, are percentages of the population. We should probably add something that clarifies. I mean, we, we have had projects recently where the, the park content was a little bit of a controversy here and there. And I don't want to go into any other items that we've discussed in the past. But I think it's important that these open spaces, if they're going to be designated as parks, it's important, it's important to know that they need to designate enough park space. And we have municipal code built around it to meet, to help us continue to meet our, our park requirements. We, we do have, we're, we're in a deficit right now because a lot of people have paid in lieu fees. I want to, I just wanted to say that there needs to be an acknowledgement of, of how that works kind of in this design or, or cross-reference back to the municipal code. And looking at some of these, you know, the, there's one, there's a, one continuous open space. It's a third of the total required, and then the rest can be broken up into smaller pieces. And we, we kind of have moved away from pocket parks in Brentwood. And so I can see these being sometimes an open space. It's just an open space. It's not a park, and that's fine. But if, if they're going to be a park, we kind of want to have a park that's of sufficient size to meet the requirement. And so I think that there should be a little bit more fleshing out of that in, in this section and Section two-point-five.
For clarification, in two-point-five-point-one, for the applicability, it does state that these requirements are in addition to the minimum requirements provided in the zoning ordinance in the municipal code. Our city's park requirements are in a different section of our municipal code. And so while these are in addition to it, those still would supersede. So the minimum park requirements that we have, that's based on the population and everything like that, still lives in the municipal code, and this is above and beyond what's already required.
I appreciate that. My, my, my concern is that a, a person contemplating doing a project here might need to be made aware of that, at least by, by reference, you know? Two-point-seven, two-point-seven-point-one. Possibly it's, it's a minor thing, but it, this is- Possibly it's, it's a minor thing, but, um, it, this is, covers a couple of different. Scenarios. One is where you have a, a, a single lot that's having two units on it, say a duplex. And another scenario is where you have an existing lot with a house on it and then somebody wants to split it to do an ADU. And, um, some of the language. Was a little confusing to me when I first read it. When it says that the maximum size of a primary dwelling unit is 800 square feet. And then it. You know, a person might get confused reading that, not understanding that you're talking about, you know, um, a new split. And, you know, the maximum height, again, a lot of this, it just, it just seems like we're covering two different kind of scenarios in, in one, in one item. Or am I just completely confused?
So this, this specific section, urban lot splits are a little bit different. That actually comes straight from state legislation. And it is, I believe SB nine, uh, urban lot splits to housing unit developments. And so these are some of the requirements that are coming from that. And it is a specific type of development application that's a little bit different. But this does include those development standards in this document. Because those are administrative approvals that we are not allowed to regulate through design review. But we still want to codify them with objective design standards and, um, objectively codify what is in the state law for those types of developments.
That, and please forgive me, but that did bring up a question that I meant to ask at the beginning. This, the document is meant to replace in whole our, our current design standards. And it was created to satisfy, um, SB 35 project requirements where we have to do ministerial. But we, do we have projects that are not subject to, to these regulations, objective designs?
The only thing that I can think of is state exempt accessory dwelling units. Do not have design, you cannot apply, um, objective design standards to state exempt ADUs. But for the most part, as far as I know, Katie can probably clarify, you know, AB 2011. Any other, uh, new state legislation that we've seen over the last four or five years typically has a standard language. That, um, says that they are all applicable to any reasonable and objective design standards adopted and codified by the city.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. And those are my chapter two questions.
Through the chair. Um, are we kind of, I assume we're sort of taking notes through this process. You, would me? I had a few comments here based off of your comments. The, I know, sorry, for the two dash, uh, sorry, 2 dot 5 dot 1 and 2. I wanted to, is it, does it make sense to just mention what our goals are in the general plan with respect to? Our park? Just to say that like, you know, cause I, I know we mentioned the zoning ordinance, but a lot of this too is getting our, you know, our park quota up.
Yeah. So there was definitely a lot of areas in our objectives, design standards where I think some of our initial drafts, we had some of that same language. And as you can see, it's already a large document. And so in a lot of areas, we. Took a lot of the language out and just referred directly to the code. But if there are areas like this specifically, which you want to make sure that they don't miss the code. You know, obviously staff, we know that the parks are important. We're, we're going to make sure that they meet the zoning code and the objective design standards. But yes, absolutely. If a developer looks at this, they might not be familiar with it. And so they might not know it right away. So we can definitely reiterate in certain areas, some of these areas. But yes, staff kind of drew some of them out just because some of them were redundant. Or if the code changes for any reason, um, we would have to change this. And so there, there are some areas like that when the municipal code or our parks section of our code is really the ruling document for those requirements. If we change that code, we're also going to have to come back and re-adopt this. So that's why we didn't quite want to do it in all cases, but I, there are areas where we can actually, you know, have our goals and what we want without explicitly. Stating, you know, it must be X, Y, and Z. So they at least know where exactly in the code to look. We could be a little bit more expressive in that area.
Yeah, I just know, because I know at least this, this body has talked at length about our, you know, desire to see these parks, uh, come up and. You know, maintaining that, uh, that goal, I think we're only at 3.7 right now, but trying to chase that for that five acres per, uh, was it thousand residents, something like that? So, um, yeah, I, I would propose that we'd say, mention something in there and just say like, you know, uh, and align, you know, maybe not. Specifically address what the, uh, what that target is, but just comment that the, I don't, in relation to the city's goals relating to. Park density or something, uh, as detailed in the zoning ordinance, something like that, just because it's really important. At least I think it's really important to, um, as part of the decisions we make up here at least. So. So there's that. And then the, um, 2.7 dot 1, the one we just talked about. Is it, makes sense to put just an asterisk after some of this that basically indicates that this is, uh, in reference to SB nine? I think we had kind of went back and forth on that a little bit, just to share that the, yeah, this is, this is here. That's the, that's the basis for it. And, you know, by commenting on the, uh, the specific law. I, I don't know. I would offer that as well, just to, as a, um, for context.
Sure. We're, we're brainstorming at this point.
Well, well, I think that that's a good idea, especially when it comes to the, um, the SB nine. Because, uh, at, at some point, people are going to reference this document. And I, I want what we decide, um, and are editing. As planning commissioners to be clear, but what has been, but what is being dictated by, and I use that word harshly. Dictated by the legislature is identified as that. So I, I do believe that an asterisk should go by this, this first one anyway, SB nine. So folks understand that's not our doing. That's the legislative doing. Okay?
Yeah, we can definitely even either have footnotes to specific government code section in this. But yes, I think I've, I've got the general context. I would want to look back at the government code numbers and the AB and SB numbers and make sure everything is, is. Correctly dotted and Ts crossed. But yes, I, uh, we could definitely, there's different options that we could do that to clarify.
Yeah, that's a, sounds like a good idea. I mean, do you like, some of these state laws may be repealed at some point in the future and. And go back and. Get back to, uh, a little bit more sanity. Um. All right. Enough of that. Uh, we're on to, uh, chapter three, site design. Uh, Vice Chair Roberts, chapter three?
Site design, I'm all right with as well.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Same. Thank you.
And Vice Chair, uh, Brand?
As far as the amenities and stuff, I think that was mostly agreed upon previously. So I'm, I'm not, I don't really have any. Significant concerns, you know, between parking, bicycle parking. This is all pretty remedial stuff, but yeah, nothing, nothing further.
All right. Well, again, predictably I have something. On, on, in the first section, 311 is, is shared open space. And. I didn't know if, if, uh, cross referencing back to section 2.5 might be helpful here. And public open space may be counted toward the required shared open space provided that is designed according to public open space. Requirements. Yeah. Yeah, I think that makes sense after rereading it. What else do I haven't done in this chapter? Anything? That's it for me for chapter three. And, um, moving on to chapter four, building design. Uh, Vice Chair Roberts?
Okay. So building design. So I believe this is where we get into. There was something here that I wanted to speak to. We talked about the roof the last time, so I don't want to rehash that. There was something here that I wanted to. Speak to. Uh, let me find it and you can move on to someone else and I'll get back to you.
Okay. We'll circle back. Um, Commissioner Jones?
Um, just with, starting with the purpose, uh, just the, the first bullet point. To mediate the scale massing and bulk of buildings to reflect the human scale, enhance the pedestrian experience and respond to a building's context through refined building massing and facade articulation. I, I'm, I'm, I feel like that could just be simplified a little bit more. You know, I know this is a very technical document and I recognize that, but I also think, you know, there's, there's just an opportunity to maybe clarify a little bit more with, what that means and what we're trying to really go for. The other one. I think actually we clarified. So that was it that I have for now. Thank you.
Vice Chair Brand?
First is comments on roof form. I think there's a couple that I'm not super wild about. The two in particular are the shed and the flat. Those are basically the same, except they're, uh, the shed is obviously at an angle. I think the, I think at least recently we've all commented on how having some type of geometric shape, I know they highlight a lot here, but. If we can scratch those two, I think there's similar comments with respect to some of the more. Avant-garde architectural styles, uh, in which include these. So I, I would just want to call those out specifically. And I imagine that, you know, as we get further in the document, there would be. Further changes backwards that would, you know, the obviously changes that would sort of cascade as a result of a bigger decision being made. But those are the, those are the first two there. I think the, uh, the massing is all pretty consistent. We're okay with the setbacks. The ground floor uses, I think this is just almost all in with respect to mixed use. So no real, yeah, MDR, HDR, mixed use sounds. Yeah. The, the sound insulation one too, I. I'm, I'm not super familiar with this particular building code regulation, but, um, I know it's come up on a number of occasions with respect to. Single family homes with a proximity near, I'll call them, uh, slightly busier, not just a one lane each way, but. Maybe a two lane each way in terms of, you know, how effectively does that insulate on like a second floor versus a first floor? May, maybe Jennifer, can you, can you kind of elaborate on that a little bit for my?
Yeah. So typically for, um, noise attenuation, what we do is, um, we require. I think now for our actual general plan, I think requires noise studies for all residential projects. And they are done, we're required of them to do by, by a noise acoustical engineer. They do it based typically off of the number of, of trips on our roadways. You know, arterials are thought to have, you know, a thousand trips a day and they have all of their metrics that are regulated through, you know, acoustical engineers. And then they do all of the measurements. It is looked at in all forward facing, um, buildings. So first floor, second floor, also backyards for multi-family common open space areas. It's not just in this document. We also have goals and regulations within our general plan for the same thing for noise. And so we require that noise study to show that all of the ratings and all of the windows are going to be below, um, certain noise requirements. What I've seen is very common in a lot of these projects, the houses that back up to, you know, Balfour. Those homes on those specific lots, we would have a condition or mitigation measure that says those homes have to have, you know, double pane windows that meet this STC rating. And their engineer is certifying that based on that type of construction, that those homes that back up that are most impacted would be below this level. So it's not something, it, it is something that it's difficult to do at a staff level, but, um, it is something that's important to have in here. And then we have their, um, engineer provide us an analysis. We have it peer reviewed typically through our CQ consultant. Who peer reviews it and takes a look at it and confirms. And then we have conditions and then during the plan check stages, we make sure that those specific homes have that option to have those STC ratings on the windows. The doors sometimes are different thickness, corridors, um, the same thing with the insulation on the walls, depending on where they back up to, whether it's a freeway, whether it's Balfour. You know, or something, you know, smaller like Garen Parkway.
So if I'm understanding this right, in terms of noise attenuation, this is 4 dot 10 dot 1, in case anybody. The, the purpose here is to define what methodologies we use to mitigate. You know, uh, ambient noise, uh, from typically dense noise origins. But as we talked about, it's, uh, we can't comment on a minimum standard with respect to noise mitigation. So it's like, the first floor has to be under a certain, it sounded like that's, that's a civil engineer type, uh, discussion where. They make those, uh, particular standards. Is that, I can't.
The objective standard that we are following is the, the STC rating of 50. So they are confirming that on every floor, the STC rating inside the building is not, or is not less than 50.
Okay. And, and the, all these materials are giving us, because it's weird, because normally we, when we talk about these design standards, it's all. Cosmetic for the most part. It's, it's all exterior. This, I think this is one of the few ones where it's, it's slightly in board from the exterior of the home, uh, for the most part.
Correct. These are acceptable options. These are, you know, standard industry options that are typically inside. It's the types of windows. It's the types of insulation and the type of construction. Typically these that we have listed are not things that you're going to see, um, but are objectively used to achieve your 50 STC rating.
Gotcha. Okay. And for, you know, future proofing, is it, you know, I, I envision at some point we would, you know, have to add to this, uh, to, if any new technologies come along, uh, for this further mitigation.
And this isn't inclusive. It says these may be used.
Okay.
And so they do not have to choose one of these. These are standard, industry standards to be used, but so these are what may be used, but we can consider other options. As long as the goal is less than 50.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, perfect. Yeah. The, thank you for clarifying that. That makes a lot of sense. And then, um. I think this, this, the last one that is ironically, the last one on the list is the, the mail delivery. I know that USPS is usually the one that defines what the. How they, they pick, how they, uh, are going to assign the mail. And obviously recently it's been much more common to have the. The boxes, not necessarily an individual, um, thing, but I just, I want to make sure that that comes out there as saying like, you know, that. The postal service decides that, not necessarily, uh, the developer, but, um, yeah. And that's, yeah, that's all I got for four.
Vice Chair Brand, if I may, I'm sorry for clarification, 4.1.4 roof form. Can you, can you tell me again the one that you were talking about? Just so I make sure it's the same one?
Uh, I wrote down the shed and the flat.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Those two.
Yep.
The flattest.
Thank you.
Jennifer's keeping notes too.
And, and so I, I, that was what I was looking for was the, the mail. So in this commission is. So i- in this commission is, as I've sat here for several years, that has been, uh, an issue. Developers have been called out regarding, uh, not providing, and I don't know that they have anything to do with it, but I do know that it is an issue here in Brentwood. And so because we're representing the residents of Brentwood and this is mentioned 4.1, uh, 4.12.2, uh, excuse me, 3, it's something that needs to be more than just a statement. It needs to find some kind of action to make sure that the residents are, are not running to the post office, which is what's been an issue here in Brentwood. Trying to purchase a box that's not available because the developer wasn't, didn't need to, uh, make room for a mailbox stem. So that is something that we definitely want, having heard the residents here in Brentwood time and time again, it's an issue.
Yeah, by including this, this is something now that we can ask upfront on their development and design review applications to show that they meet this standard. They can, we can now require them to show on their plans where they're going to have their mailboxes and their delivery standards and they can have that as a standard note, um, that we can require on their plans upfront.
Okay.
Instead of waiting till further stages, uh, down the road where in the past it sometimes had happened.
Great, thanks.
Right. And, um, I think I'll go on chapter four. Well, I didn't have a, a note on the noise attenuation, um, so I'll go there first since Vice Chair Brand bought it up, brought it up. For, for reasons I won't go into, I recently had occasion to be looking at these ASTME 90 standards. And 50 is not a great noise reduction level. Um, it is kind of the standard that people use. And I noticed that this is, um, related back into California building code. So I would, I would assume that we don't have an option to up the ASTME 90 standard in Brentwood. Would we, would we run afoul of the reasonableness or? Like if we wanted to have our own standard?
I would have to look into it because I know, um, anything that deviates, if we have special building code requirements, has to go through a, a separate process or a building vision. I'm, I'm not speci- I'm not super familiar with those requirements and what findings we would have to make to make deviations from the code. But we can look into that.
Yeah, it was just a question. I, it's really difficult when the state, you know, basically, most of what's in municipal code just comes directly from state recommendations anyway, for many, for many matters. So where was I in my notes? Roof form and the, right off the bat, it says roof forms shall complement underlying architectural style. Uh, complements kind of open to interpretation, um, so that would be an, an area. And I have some thoughts about how we could maybe go, when we go into the individual styles, there are, there is a section about the roof. And, um, within the individual styles, uh, you could say which roof designs would be valid for each style and name them based on what's on this page and use, this page is definitional and then you could refer back to it. And then that way, so for instance, the, the shed roof would not be a whole house roof, but there are, um, things that, that you, I think I actually saw a definition of maybe a front entrance that had a shed roof because it's up against the house and the roof just hangs off the side of the house for something like that, so obviously you don't want to, you know, have a 3,000 square foot house with just a shed roof, but it's good for certain accessory uses and that all could be defined. And, but what I like about this is here you have actual, um, definitions of what a roof form is, what it looks like. And, and then you can use this going into other sections as, as a reference and so a person can flip back here and say, oh, okay, I can do this, I can't do that. For instance, a Victorian, you probably wouldn't have a sawtooth roof, you know, and things like that. But it might be appropriate, uh, in some kind of an apartment building. I, I don't know. I don't want to go into that right now, but. Moving on to entry typologies, 4.11.1, um, just a minor note. Where you talk about entries, 4.11.1, um, says you can, you can do some things and, uh, and then it kind of doesn't say what, what, you know, you're making an exception to. It's kind of, it's kind of like, you can make an exception and have it around the side instead of the front, but it doesn't really mention where you're required to have it in the front. And so I thought for, for clarification, um, you could add a sentence on there that said, otherwise for other considerations, um, the, other than the, the side entry, the entry would conform, conform to the, um, standards for the specific entry type. And then you go on to mention what each entry type is, you know, door yard or porch or whatever, but is, you're just saying it can be on the side. But, um, it's not clear when you read it, like, why couldn't it be on the side, you know? Again, I, I just saw it as an exemption, exception to a, a rule that wasn't stated. That kind of, that sort of makes sense.
Through the chair also, I don't remember, but I want to say that the entry, it has to be on the first floor as well. I don't recall that specifically, but I don't, I don't see that written here, but I mean, it's possibly publicly accessible sidewalk or pedestrian pathway, I guess. I don't know how that would, uh, it, that's, it's not super well outlined. Uh, maybe that's just a, maybe that's just downtown. I, I gotta look that up.
That might, that might be for some of the, you know, there's, they talk about, this is all about residential and ground floor. I, I don't really know if I saw anything about door entries for, um, like an apartment building where you have a walk-up or anything like that, but.
Yeah, yeah. Or mixed use potentially.
Yeah, for mixed use, they do have some, um, frontages. Shop front, like 411 35 and 411 36. Yeah, I, I wasn't too concerned about the, um, the, the, the entry types as much as just this one little this very small thing. Got it. Okay, thank you. The next question I had was under 412.1. 1A, uh, utilities, equipment, service areas, et cetera. Are, or at the rear or side of the building, if not part of the primary frontage, and I wasn't, maybe I just didn't read carefully enough, but I didn't really get to where we described utilities that would be part of the primary frontage. What kind of utilities are we?
In the, right above that, it, it doesn't, in the 412 dot 1 dot 2, all above ground utilities and equipment. For example, electric and gas meters, fire sprinkler valves, backflow prevention devices, et cetera, service areas such as garbage collection areas. It, it lists there what the, the utilities and the equipment are in the proceeding.
Sure, but which of those might be part of the primary frontage?
You have backflow preventer vice, devices that are typically within the, the front landscape setback. Fire sprinkler valves, oftentimes they try to put in the front, um, landscape setback. These are common key things that we're pushing back frequently on, trying to get them out of, of the frontage.
Okay. I think that was it for chapter four for me.
If we can look at that language a little closer.
Pardon?
So we, we could look at that language a little closer on the 412.1.2.
Appreciate it, thank you. I, I, again, it was, I'm a layperson, it was a little confusing to me, but, um, that's what I had for chapter four, everybody.
Just, just go back a little bit on that, um, because I didn't know we were talking about some components in, on the interior and insulation. And so I think it's relevant here because I'm finding that some of the units, I've done some research of my own and I'm finding that, um, that sound transmission that's required, the developers are not stepping up. I, I don't know how it's being missed, but people from ceiling to floor can actually hear, uh, the footsteps and that's no good. Um, I think that the most common problem in the construction of the floor-ceiling, um, assemblies for sound control has to do with the attachment of the drive wall. But what I'd like for us to be cognizant of is that, um, those sound mats that go into this process, that we really make sure that they're used appropriately. Uh, because the thicker the sound mat, um, the more we will deflect. Um, and what they're doing is putting in these very thin, uh, and, and so everybody can hear one another and I, we're going to do this, we need to do it right. The developers is cost-driven, so he is not going to want to spend money in this area, but I would tell you and say to, uh, the planners, that is a must. Folks don't know until they're moved in what they're now having to deal with. And that acoustic piece is very relevant. What are you going to do? Just abandon? It, it, it doesn't work that way. So I, I would really like for us to make sure that that's in the record. And that is understood, that thin mats are not going to work. Thick mats and that acoustic piece is very important. Um, it's all relevant to the installation.
In addition to that, just something that popped into my mind, I, it doesn't sound like this standard, uh, with respect to the noise suppression or noise mitigation has any specifics to, um, like vibrational frequency, because it's like, it's a noise that you may not necessarily hear, but you can feel. Um, and I think the comments that you're describing as far as, you know, footsteps and stuff, that's something that might be a much more of a, a resonance versus an auditory, um, thing. I, Jennifer, do you know anything? In terms of objectivity, do we make any decisions? Are we able to make decisions with respect to the, uh, material, specific materials vibrational frequency as it relates to, I don't know, uh, goofy noise wavelengths and stuff like that?
I'll have to look into it. It, it would be my understanding that would more fall under the building code section and not necessarily the objective design standards. But I, I can look into, um, what we can do regarding vibrations and so forth. I know right now our objective design standards, the state that, you know, you have to meet all California building code requirements. I, I do understand, you know, I, I think I've talked to Commissioner Roberts, um, about some of the, the older developments that we have. They definitely did not have the same building standards back in the day that they currently do. And so vibration and noise were definitely some of the things that they did not think of and they did not regulate in past, uh, cycles, building code cycles. Um, and those are things that as, as the state progresses, is getting more stringent. But I would have to look into that, whether that is something that we can actually regulate, uh, from the design perspective, rather than the California building code perspective.
That seems fair, yeah.
If I could also just pop in real quickly, um, whether or not a proposed project would expose people or a generation of people to excessive ground-borne vibration or ground-borne noise levels is also something that gets studied in the SEQA analysis. So it has, it has a life of its own there too, and that's part of the noise study that would be done. So it is also addressed elsewhere.
So in that case, it wouldn't necessarily need to be in the document, it would just be done through that?
Yeah, sort of piggybacking on what Jennifer said, since it already does get studied in another, um, location, I don't know that it would be necessary to replicate that here. Uh, you know, I would defer to Jennifer and the consultant because I know I'm coming into this late and you all have been working on this for a while, but it, it isn't something that escapes our attention and it does have, um, a place of its own for study.
Sure. I, I would just, um, I was about to add anyway, uh, there is a, there is a different standard for, um, inter-floor noise as opposed to side-to-side wall noise. Um, and I, I haven't really been in the code lately, so, um, it, one thing you might do is just look in the code and see if there's a different, um, standard for, uh, for, you know, ceiling, floor treatments as opposed to wall treatments. If there was something that you wanted to say something there, you could, but again, this design document, it's design standards and, um, the building code doesn't go away if they build according to these standards. They still have to meet the building codes. And the building codes, I think, are, um, basically reflective of state law. And they're updated to stay with state law. And, uh, so if there's areas where that's not being done, that's more for the, um, the, the building inspectors should be taking care of that. And, uh, if they're not, then that needs to go back to them as a, as a, ask them to make sure that they.
Well, just an FYI, so I can put it on the record through the chair. We have two new developments, um, one over by Amber Lane and one over on, um, Sand Creek. And unfortunately, that noise, uh, classification that we're talking about, they did not. They did not. Um, and so that floor to ceiling, as it is noted here in this packet, 4.10 noise and order addu-ation, they failed miserably in both those areas. Uh, folks can hear one another. That's a big, it's a big issue. And these are the newest developments here in Brentwood. So I, I would beg to differ that if we're going to do this and we're, we're looking to do mixed units, if we're going to put this language in this packet, that we make it very clear that what's already happened with these two new developments does not happen with newer developments. Because folks are stuck. That's mixed usage.
Okay, so we'll, we'll make a, um, a note on our list to try to include the, um, standards for, uh, sound insulation between floor and ceiling. However, we want to, I think that that's perfectly reasonable. It, there should be something in code about it already, so. And I don't know that we have to, but since we have the other one in there, just seems reasonable to have them both.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Chapter five, do we want to do the whole chapter? Do we want to go through style by style? I, I'm okay either way. Style by style or whole chapter?
Well, I, I think we, we, if it's my turn, I think that we, we went through this already. And I think the, the consensus was, at least the, the big discussion was around contemporary.
Yeah, I have a bunch of notes that go through all the styles, so I would like to discuss all the styles.
Sure.
And we'll get to contemporary, it's conveniently, it's last, so.
Through the chair, just 5.1.2, which shows the map. Should we wait until we get to, because I had something around contemporary, which would be in relation to the map that starts off the chapter.
Yeah, we, we can talk about that when we talk about contemporary.
Okay, sounds good. Yep, thank you.
Vice Chair Brandt, do you have a preference for how we proceed?
No, fine.
All right.
Going through each one.
So let's do it like this, let's talk about the other styles other than contemporary, and then we'll talk about contemporary on its own, because I think that's a, it's kind of a, of a horse of a color or something. Does that, does that work for you, for us? Okay, and Vice Chair Roberts, do you have any comments on the styles other than contemporary?
Contemporary?
Other than.
Other than contemporary.
Yeah, all the other ones.
I'm okay with everything that I've seen thus far.
Okay.
With the exception of what we will ultimately get to, so fine.
Alrighty. Commissioner Jones?
Same, thank you.
And Vice Chair Brandt?
I think the main thing outside of the contemporary was that there was a variety of roof type materials, and I know you and I talked about this as well. With regards to a lot of the others, and I realize that there's, I think Chair Floor described that as well, is like, we want materials chosen especially for roofs so that they're, they have a long lifetime. And I was hoping that there could be some degree of uniformity based off of the styles that we, you know, elect to codify in this document. And I'm just still seeing stuff like the, maybe not necessarily asphalt shingles, but I, I've seen a lot of stuff that is a, you know, marginal departure from a lot of the architecture we've seen. Or sorry, the roof material choices outside, within the city limits. So that was one main concern and the, in terms of the decorative styles, I know as we go through some of these, we have different numbers associated with each style. Now is it, and I'm, I'm not at all an expert with respect to the architectural design and such, but I am curious as to why the, there's a variety of, I'll call minimum criteria to sort of establish that that design, those design characteristics are indicative of that particular style.
Drew or Tim, do you guys want to?
Yeah, I can respond to that. Yes, so we basically, I think you're talking about kind of the decorative elements. And, and we basically look to find, you know, as many options as possible for those decorative elements within a style. And, you know, I think from our reading of the styles, just some styles have more decorative optionality than others. You know, like a Spanish style tends to have a lot of variety in types of decorative elements. Whereas, you know, a ranch may have fewer, it has, you know, important elements. But it may have fewer kind of embellishments than the Spanish style. And so then we tried to say, you know, if you're picking a richer style like Spanish, you need to do a little bit more to make sure that, that you're kind of in, you're not providing just a simple stripped down version of what the style should really be. Whereas maybe ranch, there are some easier moves to get to some authenticity with that style.
Yeah, that totally makes sense. I, I just, I'm looking over here at Colonial and it says choose at least two versus the six, I think on, is it Spanish? It just seems like a big difference in terms of how we are able to objectively define a particular style. So I, I'm looking for a bit more uniformity so that, I mean, I, I just don't want to have a a, a project where it's like, well, we pick Colonial because it's the easiest one to suffice the, you know, the two requirements. Ideally, they would pick something that matches the character and I, I wouldn't want the design elements to be the sort of low hanging fruit for these types of things to be, for their decision to essentially be made, or maybe it's easier. That, that's just by cursory analysis of this, but I, it's just a, an observation I made here with respect to the, I guess, the macro of the different stylistic choices that we have listed here, so. Other than that, I think, yeah, we're going to talk about contemporary. And then I think, I think that's it. And then, yeah, I definitely want to get back to the map, but that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to start with the, the old objective design. And I don't expect you to have it in front of you, but I can just read to you. In section 210.2, they define roof materials. And the very first sentence, "Concrete or clay tile roofing shall be the primary roof covering." So that's how it's always been here. And as I went through the, the architectural styles, I didn't see any necessarily concrete. There is some clay tile for the, the Spanish and the Mediterranean, but in the concrete and, in, in an offline meeting that I had with staff, I was mentioning, my house in, in Deer Ridge has what was represented to me as a cement tile. We kind of don't in chapter four, so I was going to suggest that we have a 4.1.13, I think would be an additional section. Where we could define our materials and colors. And so for example, for roof materials, we, we have different roof materials, we might, we might want to do in different styles, but we should have a, a master index that describes each tile and give some characteristics so that not only can we say, hey, you can have this kind of tile, but it has to meet these particular characteristics or standards. And again, they have things about wall materials and colors here and so I just want you to know that I'm envisioning that there is this reference that we can go back to. That, and you'll see the use of it as I go through the styles.
Would you have any objection to that being at the beginning of chapter five?
Why did I think it would go in four? I don't, I don't like have a major objection, as long as it's in the document, but.
Yeah, that, right, okay.
Building design, you know, like some of this other stuff seemed kind of material like, but yeah, I think four or five, wherever you want to put it. But I do think that having a description of particularly roof materials, you know, wall materials, colorways, things like that. And, you know, we have this whole sticky kind of issue where, as Andrew has noted, we, we don't want to take away so much flexibility that it kills creativity, but at the same time, we don't want to leave so much flexibility that it creates the hazard of people just building whatever's cheapest and not really caring about how long things will last. And as I discuss roof materials, I think that will come clearer. And I'll, I'll start giving examples as I go through. So looking at the Spanish style. So red fired clay tile roofs, that's pretty specific. And then it says, "Common shapes include both Spanish S-shaped and mission half cylinder." But that's just common shapes. And if I'm reading this and I can think of some other shape I might want to put there, it doesn't really say I can't use it, right? So I'd like to, to tighten those kinds of things up a little bit. And so by having a definition of red fired clay tile roofs and saying, you know, what a S-shaped one is and what a half cylinder is, and then coming, you could just come back to this page and just say, use that as defined. And refer back to that. And again, the optional elements, I noticed here that they mentioned hip roof towers or belvedeers. And that's an, that's an example of where you're calling out a specific roof type, which is good, and where it would be used. And the same thing for required elements on the roof, a simple hip or gable roof with one intersecting gable. So some of these are better than others, this is pretty good here. And you do have, a person doesn't have to wonder what a hip roof is, because you do have, back in chapter four, an example of what a hip roof is. And so this is, this is why it's good to have these, these definitional things. I think that's why I was wanting to include the, the roof tile types and things in chapter four, because that seemed to be a more definitional chapter. And yeah, so there's language back in chapter four about some things should complement certain styles. And I think one way to, to resolve the ambiguity is to have a section in the styles which says, okay, here, these are the styles of roof that can't, that work with this. So you wouldn't be reading something over in chapter four that says, you know, the roof has to complement the style. In this case, you're saying specifically what style, what, what roof does complement the style, and I think that should be carried through all of the styles. Again, materials and colors. Light, natural, neutral color for the exterior stucco, such as, such as is another term that sort of blows out objectivity. And again, in the next paragraph, there's such as dark brown, brown or a natural dark stain. And again, I don't know how picky we want to be about it, but it's really hard if we, if we leave gaps. Some, you know, we have so many great applicants, so many people come into this town because they love it and they love the way it looks and they, and they want to do nice things. But, you know, human nature being what it is, we're going to have applicants that will look for ways to do things that may not be in the best interest of the city. And so we have to be, we're going to be objective, we have to always be objective. In the same way that the accents here. Decorative tiles. There are a lot of tiles that could be described as decorative that you wouldn't want to necessarily see on a Spanish-architected house. Go into any hotel bathroom, you'll see some tiles you wouldn't want to see, or especially if you're in Vegas. So I, and this is, I really struggle with how we can be specific about it. Having some definitions could help. But the accents is the thing that really stymies me a lot. Like this wrought iron railing, I just love the picture. But there's wrought iron railing that's not Spanish at all. And there's nothing in here that really requires that. And I hate to say it, but we've had railing controversies in Brentwood before. And so I think it's, it's worth noting and trying to find a way to say something about the style of the decoration itself. And I'm, and I know that I'm, I'm setting a quandary for staff, because it's a quandary for me. But I just feel like that there is a need for it. Or some of the other. And again, I'm looking at Mediterranean now, common shapes. And they give more shapes, tapered mission or American Spanish, which weren't mentioned in the, in the Spanish. So now I'm a confused applicant trying to figure out, well, would a, would a tapered shape be okay in Spanish if it's okay in Mediterranean? I mean, in Spanish, they said common shapes, they didn't mention it, here they mention it. So I think we need to be careful about things like that. And again, if we had roofing material definitions in their own section and could refer back to them and could be as specific as we need to be, I think that would be super helpful. 534, still in Mediterranean, materials and colors, earth town colors, rustic materials. I like that neutral color scheme has a definition that's at least says what they mean by it. Again, the optional elements, stone, postone, brick. On other descriptions of stone accents, I've seen, you know, more specific things like river rock. It just seems like we have a smattering of different kinds of things that can be used and it, it needs to always be clear as to what kind of thing, you know, is, there's many kinds of stone. And again, I just, on the top of the, the next page, 535, I, I just wrote the, with all, as with all architectural styles, some of these items just need more definitive descriptions to match the style. Railings, light fixtures. You know, wrought iron railing, again, there's some that would work and some that wouldn't. And we, wrought iron light fixtures, at least a wrought iron. Ranch. I decided to pick on the word like again, architectural forms like barns, silos, sheds. And form, the form, it's not so critical there, but because you're just kind of describing a process and yet. Here is finally in the ranch style where we get into some, some roof type materials that in the past we haven't seen in Brentwood, and I think for good reason. Asphalt shingles. Asphalt shingles don't live up to what we talked about. Quality materials and craftsmanship that maintain their appearance over the years, over time, convey a sense of pride, reduce long-term capital assets. That's not really a good description of asphalt shingles. I might get some pushback on that. Well, there's some that are that good. But if, if we're bound and determined to have asphalt shingles, then there should be a a definition somewhere of which kind. I personally, as far as asphalt shingles, I, I strongly object to that. Synthetic slate, so I had to go look up synthetic slate, turns out it's composite. Problem with composite is there's composite and there's composite, and some composite is better than others, and some composite curls up at the edges after a few years and some doesn't. And I would just not have synthetic slate shingles. On the other hand, there are other things that look like shingle, shingles, like ceramic tiles that might work in here. And right now, we, we, we haven't even considered these kinds of roofing, so. I guess I would like to have another pass at this, after we have all of the potential types of roofing materials defined and say which ones go with which styles, it would, it would be fun to, to do that. And synthetic slate, I don't think is going to make my list, but it might, you know, pass. And again, materials and colors, we, we just need a, a section that provides definitions, like. Definitions like unadorned materials, metal, wood, masonry. Would somebody read that and think that an adored piece of wood is untreated in any way? You know, it's like, it's got to have at least some varnish or some paint or something on it. So. Stucco, you know, some of these things are fairly specific and some of them are not. Sorry, I'm kind of droning, I'm trying to work through them pretty quick. I thought, I did note that I thought it was funny that the eastern portion of Brentwood is where craftsmen is, is because I live in Deer River and Ridge, and there's plenty of that in the west Brentwood, trust me. Again, craftsmen, asphalt shingles, synthetic slate shingles. I don't like either of those and I don't have any alternates defined yet to, to suggest. For craftsmen, but I, I do think that, you know, the, the more traditional shingle look is fine, but asphalt and synthetic slate, which is really composite, may not be the best. Walls and windows, you mentioned vinyl and steel in here, and I don't know if vinyl and steel are, are good for a single family residential. They might be, steel might be okay in some people's eyes for a. You know, a block of studio apartments or, or a. You know, I don't know, but I, I would say that. And then when you talk about wood, again, we need to have definitions around wood because there's wood and then there's wood. And, you know, like it needs to be treated wood if it's going to be wood. Fiber cement, I think it's what I've been calling hardy board, but that's okay. But yeah, I don't like the vinyl and steel on five, five, three. Queen Anne. Again, we've got, for shingles, we've got asphalt and we've got synthetic slate. And I, I do agree that Queen Anne likes to have a shingle, but those are not my favorite materials for shingles. And it does mention metal. I was kind of intrigued by that. I'm trying to think of a, of a Queen Anne that I've seen anywhere that had, you know, the metal roof, the kind of flat metal roof. Anyway, there are metal shingles. But the kind of flat metal roof, I don't know if I've ever seen that. So I was really intrigued to see that as an option here. Optional elements, ornamental metal patterns, a gable roof. Ornamental might not be specific enough. Decorative, these things. On the iron railings and things, again, if we, if we could have some stylistic definitions of some of these materials. Be very helpful. And I'm not being very helpful because I don't exactly know how to do that, but. Working on it. Italianate. Here we have red tone clay tiles, so that's pretty specific. Again, materials and colors, we need to make sure we're specific to the style. For the accents. Colonial. Here was something I thought was good. It does list a simple pitched roof, a hip roof or a gabled roof. And you can cross-reference that to chapter four, it's already there. Slate tile is good, wood like composite, no. Unless I see a, a definition of composite that convinces me that it's not an inferior composite, I'll never be convinced that that should be good. The walls for colonial, it mentions horizontal wood siding. I would imagine that should be hardy board cement siding or it should at least. Mention, there should be a definition of wood siding somewhere that sets some standards for it. Because there is some cheap stuff out there that you, you don't really want to see after ten years. Full brick facade, I don't know. That's just a stylistic. Thing that I have is I don't really want to see a full brick based house anymore. Amongst the, the colonials. Exposed wood or wood like materials, again, there should be a definition somewhere of what constitutes wood that you could and couldn't use. We just want to make sure that the materials, again, live up to that standard, that they're quality materials. And that, that they'll look good into the future. And I, I think that's a, if we, if we state it, then that's a defensible, reasonable standard. And that brings me to the end of the non-contemporary section. And I, I do apologize, some of that was droning and repetitive, but I, I think that if we, if we have a section that, that provides some robust definitions of those things, then that makes it a lot easier to go back and. And rework some of these things so that they make sense. Alrighty. Vice Chair Roberts, do you want to talk about contemporary?
Well, not really.
Okay.
But in our last conversation as a commission, we, we went back and forth a lot about contemporary and how that particular look didn't have a place here in Brentwood. Based on what we have in Brentwood, I would, I happen to agree with that. I, I drove around quite a bit and, but for maybe new developments that might be coming in. I just don't see how that is going to factor in with what we already have. So I for one, don't find that it is a viable style for Brentwood at all. You know, and, and I say that because I don't see vast land, something like that. Something like contemporary would have acreage. So that it would pop, it would, it would not be so, it wouldn't take away from what's already here. Putting something contemporary next to the, the homes here, and they're tight. There's not a lot of space between the homes and the developments that I've seen. And I've driven around quite a bit. It would just be, it, it would be out of, it'd be out of place. That, that's just my feeling, it, it would, it would not be a compliment. So for that, I would. I would say no to contemporary now with mixed usage coming our way, maybe, but. I don't see it. That's all I have to say.
All right. Commissioner John.
Yeah, thank you. I, I would agree, I know I, I brought this up pretty strongly at the last meeting about. The contemporary style and it was interesting, you know, I was, I was recently out with my family. We went to my childhood hometown and we were in my old neighborhood. And a couple of blocks down, there was a house that got. You know, basically they, they tore it down and they built a new one and it was contemporary. And the vast contrast, you know, was, was, it was just such a nice, where I, I couldn't believe it was allowed, honestly. But to that point, I, I'm. I just, the, the, the visual contrast of this look compared to what we have in Brentwood, I just don't think it fits. And so to Pastor Roberts' point about, you know, targeted areas. I mean, sure, but ultimately like going back to the, the, the map. Five point, one point two, you know, like I, I would say taking that off the, the citywide map. And, you know, not, not including that as just a, as a design to be considered. Especially when it comes to, you know, building of homes. I just, I just don't think it fits. So I, I would like to see. That removed. And I think, you know. Chair floor did a very thorough and wonderful job going through the rest of the designs, which I think, you know, ultimately have a fit. But contemporary does not. And I would absolutely support taking that off the citywide map and just not having that as something to be considered.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brand.
Yeah, so I know I had echoed that sentiment in the last meeting about this. And as far as the contemporary design goes, yeah, does it? I don't see it really having much of a place in, in Brentwood from a residential standpoint or, or mixed use. It's more common now, it seems to be very popular in a lot of up and coming neighborhoods. I just, I don't see this character. Having any continuity through the, most of the neighborhoods within Brentwood. Now, I do, I do agree that when we look at the map. The applicability is particularly in the, in the majority of the city, and we only have really three heat maps here, but. It's, it's, I really struggled to find any neighborhood with the exception of, I think it's Kindred and Balfour, I think is. It's like the only one. That has any, you know, concentration of. Houses that have a contemporary style. And so, you know, when I'm looking at the maps, like, well, maybe that's, if we wanted to zone in on a couple of neighborhoods, maybe fine. But for the most part, I, I don't see its applicability and it sounds like I have a. I'm kind of preaching to the choir here, at least in this audience, but. The, the other thing I, I want to bring up too is with respect to, we haven't talked much about it, but PA one has its own designation here, unique to the rest of the city, no different than downtown. And I went back and forth on this in my mind in particular because the idea here is that PA one, we wanted to be this open and new development that has a variety of, you know, residential projects as well as commercial and, you know, long-term job opportunities. And I was listening to the Harold Duffy, who's the, you know, proposed new city manager. And he had a lot of really interesting ideas as far as that's concerned. And what I, what got me thinking about it was that PA one will effectively be our new, basically most people's introduction to Brentwood. You know, you come south on highway four or east, I guess. And that'll be, you know, like welcome to Brentwood and these are going to be the first things we see. So if we allow contemporary within, from a residential context in PA one. How is that a, an appropriate introduction to Brentwood as a city? You know, I, I went to the East Contra Costa Historical Society and I, I got the, the book and I, this 75th anniversary book. And it, it's great because it has all these old pictures of what Brentwood used to look like over the past hundred and, I don't know, 50 years or so. And a lot of the architectural styles I see, you can kind of see some of the, these black and white pictures. I don't know if anyone can see this, but it, it complements a lot of the styles that we see here in this document. And I, and I thought it was fantastic because I could see the roots of Brentwood in some of these design styles. With respect to roofs and ornamentation and windows and, and all of that. And it felt, I looked at this, it felt like Brentwood. And I, I know sometimes these things are intangible and we attempt to define them from an objectivity standpoint, but. I just, I looked at this and I said, if I wanted to make an introduction to us, a, a new person to Brentwood, it probably wouldn't be contemporary. And so with that being said, I would suggest that if we were going to remove it from citywide, that we would probably also remove it from PA one and then replace it with one or more options that are more conducive to the character of Brentwood's citywide architectural style. So that would be at least the ones that popped out for me included Spanish, Mediterranean. And ranch, really. And you know, this only does focus in particular on residential project. We can't, this doesn't talk about any commercial things in that. But what it would do is that it would, it would at least allow us to have this. We would help set the tone for what PA one might look like from a residential standpoint. And then have hopefully, we, we don't know what's going to come first, obviously, but. We hope that there's going to be a kind of, a, a style that will define it uniquely, but also not make it feel like this annexed territory that's our, you know, big, you know, tech and development hub. We want it to feel like Brentwood, not the, you know, little redheaded stepchild of the, of the city. We want it to be a part of it. And so the, the, the way that I see us accomplishing that, at least through this residential standard, is that we go about it by applying a couple more of these citywide architectural standards. So that's my rant, thank you.
All right, yeah, that's a, a really good point that. I, I tend to echo, I mean, when I, when I see some of these renderings, I, I think about industrial, you know, the lofts that you see in some cities. And I think that they're fine there in those cities, but I don't think that this represents Brentwood in any way. I want to say that as you, you do come up for and you come through PA one, which is the innovation center site. What you see as you look off to your right is Mount Diablo. And Mount Diablo is a defining icon of Brentwood. It's in our, it's in our, our logo when you drive into town, it's in the arch that you see when you come into town. People care about it a lot. And I think that to put. You know, industrial looking buildings right there. Especially residential. It's just too jarring of a juxtaposition and it, it really doesn't match the rest of Brentwood at all. And I know that probably some of the creatives that, that were thinking about what the innovation center would look like. Kind of liked it, I mean, I went back and I looked at the innovation center renderings and there, there is some, you could call contemporary apartment in there. But then the, the office space that they envisioned was much more sweeping and organic and like nothing that's in any of these books and certainly not like contemporary. I don't have a lot of good to say about the contemporary. I, I just. Yeah, I, I think that. Since Vice Chair Brand brought it up, do we want to? Go around and, and poll the rest of the commission about what might, if, if we had one of these styles, one of these other styles in PA one, what it might be or one or two, I think. Vice Chair Brand mentioned three, but what, what kind of styles we want? Or do we want to just strike contemporary and send them back to the drawing board or what do we want to do?
If I may, I, I think we should just strike it. The last thing that we want is to have a hodgepodge of, of styles. It, it throws off. What we have historically seen here in Brentwood. And great for modern, it's not for us. And I think people appreciate what they have here. So to throw something like that in the mix, it becomes an eyesore. It's sending the wrong message. And so to, to just take it out completely would probably be the best approach and work with, I mean, there are quite a few styles here. So it's not like, you know, they're, they're stuck with one or two, there are several of them that they can come back to that would fit in P one.
So would you suggest that for PA one, that there be options for styles? Or, and which ones would you put in those, that list of options?
I would just leave it open, you know, I, I, I'm comfortable with everything that I've seen but contemporary. And so maybe at another time that would come to us and we could. Have a bigger conversation, but I wouldn't want to. But I wouldn't want to hone in on one or two for PA1. I would just say that what can't come into PA1 would be Contemporary. That would be my, my thought.
All right.
I would agree with that.
And Vice Chair Brand, you had mentioned some.
Yeah, I mean, because if we're going to X out Contemporary potentially, that we would have to replace it with something, at least. Yeah, Jennifer's nodding her head, yeah. So there would have to be an architectural style that would fill its place, at least one, as far as I'm aware. And that's, so I just threw out a few that I had specifically identified as being, maybe not necessarily most common, but a few that spoke to me most as far as Brentwood representative type styles. And maybe one, maybe three. But I do know that when it comes to particular architectural styles, if, if developers have more options in terms of the styles available to them, it does inspire a bit more development. So in, in that regard, maybe a healthy medium would be, you know, enabling several. And particularly in residential, a single-family home, right? We see typically developers offer a variety of those styles, like, you know, some, there'll be a Craftsman house, there'll be sometimes a Mediterranean or, you know, Italianate. I, I personally very much like that one. When we talk, and this is not to go too much more into the PA1 thing, but when we talk about that as a transit, what's the phrase we use? It's like village, village transit center for most of that, particularly around the Highway 4 corridor. It's like, you know, all that use of stone and such in the road and all that, like, it, it speaks to being very, the images that I saw in terms of, how to say, other, other developments that sort of matched that in terms of setting the tone in some of those areas. The Italianate also was pretty consistent with that. So at least some of the design elements, maybe I should be a bit more clear. So I, I would, I'm, I'm open to discussion as far as what may replace that Contemporary. It sounds like we've got a growing consensus there.
Yeah. As, as I'm flipping through the book and looking at the different styles, and I'm trying to kind of look at the multifamily, the most, I mentioned previously that the neighborhoods that I, that I live in, Deer Ridge and Shadow Lakes, we sent, we seem to have multiple styles, like, right next door to each other. I, you know, several of the houses, several of the models are like that first Craftsman picture with the, the wood siding and the, and the, and the wood columns and everything. And then right next to it, you'll see something more Craftsman-y, I think, or ranch. Kind of hard to tell. So having said that, I, I don't know that I would necessarily say that it could only be one kind. I think Mediterranean is always a nice choice for this part of California. We do kind of share a Mediterranean climate, and we have wineries around. And we kind of do have that sense of the area, but it's not so traditional here. The Spanish, obviously, the ranch. The ranch could be good. Craftsman. Craftsman, I could, I could get into. You know, the one style I probably wouldn't for sure put there is Queen Anne. It's just not the right spot for it. And I think we, we have a district where Queen Anne is, is the thing, and it's cool. But it's, you know, it's not the, the first thing about our city. So I, you know, I, I think we have a lot of options here to work with. The Italianate, Italianate, is, yeah. These usually look pretty great, the Italianates, so. Yeah, I, I think we just have so many options that we don't really need Contemporary there. I, I think that if we, if we put up things that are pretty nice there, and we, we leave the space for the office building, I think that when the time comes to build the office space, that the interested parties would like to know they're putting it next to some nice housing that would attract, you know, be attractive to potential employees. And so, yeah, that's kind of my take on it. So I think we've, we've got a, a pretty strong sentiment that the Contemporary can go.
Great.
And that leaves us with Chapter Six, I think is the last chapter. Is everybody doing good?
Vice Chair, if I may, it's just a, for PA1, are we landing on the, just everything but Contemporary? And not Queen Anne?
We, we, I don't think we're, we're quite there yet.
Okay, we'll get back to it.
I think we're going to have to go back through the whole list one more time. We've been making a, kind of a brainstorming list. And so, I, it's already nine o'clock, but I think we're going to have to go back through the list and make sure that we all agree on each item on the list and how it should look and do that.
Thank you.
All right, so.
One option there could be to, you know, we, we have a kind of list of citywide versus kind of what's more specifically downtown. And so it could be just applying that citywide list to the PA1 area.
That would be an option. All right, so Chapter Six, Pastor Roberts, anything?
Okay, well, on Chapter Six, we had a little chat. And the chat had to do with the non-plant materials, 6132 and 6133. And that percentage shall be allowed up to 8%. I think we need to increase that. I'm looking at all the materials, similar non-plant materials, where no plant material is present, shall be allowed 8% of total required landscape area. I'd like to see that increased. And one gallon containerized plant material size shall be a minimum ground level size at insulation. I don't know what that means, so maybe you can explain it. But that was my take on, on the, the non-plant material. Initially, I thought that some folks might want to just stay away from plants altogether and just have rock gardens. But it came out in our discussion that they had to have some kind of foliage. And that being said, I'd keep being in, in step with rock, rock garden or rock landscape, that that percentage be increased.
Okay. Jennifer, did, did you want to answer Chair Roberts' question?
Yeah, the one gallon containerized plant material size.
I can also speak to that.
Yeah.
So that's a kind of typical planting size. So typically, plants come in, will come in, you can get them very small. You know, herbs, you can get in three-inch or six-inch cups. A one gallon is, if you imagine, you know, a one gallon, gallon of milk, that's about the size of the container that the plant is in when, when it's taken to the site and installed. And then, you know, if you have one gallon, five gallon usually starts to get into bigger shrubs, even trees, and then, you know, trees go into box sizes after that. You know, 24-inch box, 36-inch box, et cetera. And so what we're trying to do here is make sure that the size of the planting is of a, you know, minimum caliper, minimum size planting, that it's going to fill in, you know, fairly quickly and not be just, you know, little three-inch sprigs of ground cover.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you for that explanation. So yeah, that, that's my take. That's the only thing that I really have, is that increasing the 8% of the total required landscaping area.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No other ads, thank you.
And Vice Chair Brand?
6.1.4 with regards to trees. I know they talk about it in Chapter Three as well, but do we have anything as far, because we say street trees shall require approved street tree from City of Brentwood Forest Guidelines, or Urban Forest Guidelines, excuse me. And is there anything that we want to say here about to, like, maintain our ArborCity status or anything like that? Because it's, I know it's a cost thing. It's not so much what we do physically with our trees. But I, I don't know if that's something symbolic. It's just, what we talked about at the beginning to me, where he said, like, are there areas that we want to emphasize a bit more effectively? And I, I would say, you know, a, a big part of Brentwood is our trees. And I, I don't know how we could do that potentially in this section or back in the Chapter Three, but it just kind of came to me here as far as looking here through Chapter Six.
So that could be something good to add to the purpose area of Chapter Six.
Yeah, just, just as a call out, even if it's not something we can, you know, objectively measure, subjectively. But yeah, that'd be great to see. And then, yeah, as far as the, you know, for folks that opt to do a, I'll call it a low moisture landscaping design, we definitely want to encourage that, just from a water conservation standpoint. I just don't, I don't know what the, the push-pull might be as far as upping that 8%, but it'd be good to have that as an option for folks, and not for everybody, but, but certainly, yeah.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think that would be a lovely option, since, full transparency, I have a front yard full of rocks. So, and very nice trees and shrubs and widespread flowering things. So I kind of have a, a more expanded take on it. I think we need to allow for these low-water styles. Don't like the, like the, the rocks with shrubs and trees, or zero escaping, not zero, but X-E-R-I escaping. The fact is, if, if for no other reason than people's water bills are insane. And, and we've, we've gone through several bouts of, in the last few years of where we had drought restrictions. I think that these can be done in a way that is attractive and it does match most of the, the housing styles that we have. Just depends on your plant selection, really. But I, I, I just think that we need to see the, the possibility or the desirability of this kind of landscaping, and, and, you know, done right, it can be beautiful. Done wrong, it can be terrible. But I, yeah, I sold my lawnmower, put in some rocks and drip system and some trees and some bushes, and I think it looks pretty nice. So I, I just think that people should have that option. And I think that new neighborhoods going in should have the option to make all the lawns match. So if they wanted to do something like that. We definitely have, you know, the landscaping talent here in Brentwood to make that happen for us, so. I do want to call out, like, something I saw that, that was very positive here, that I, I think is a good example of, when they talk about drought-tolerant plant species, there's a, a nice definition by reference that takes you over to the Water Use Classification of Landscape Species for Region Two, gives you a link. So that if a person was wondering, you know, like, what kind of plants would I need to put in my project to be drought, drought tolerant, there's a nice reference for them, and I, I just, I love that that's in there, and I, I encourage that all throughout this document. And we had a caller earlier wanting to know about fire hazard, and this is where finally we get to the Fire Hazard Section 6.3. And the ember-resistant zone that we had talked about, and I think Jennifer mentioned it as well as caller, is that we have a, a five-foot water-resistant zone. Right now, we're, we're only putting it into the very high fire severity zone. And my understanding from a former chairperson in this body, who is also an insurance representative, that the insurance companies have a real high preference for that, that it can affect people's rates. I've kind of mostly done this at my house. I do still have a couple shrubs that are close to the house, but we could consider making that citywide. It's just something that I, I want to put on the list for discussion. See how the rest of the commission feels about that. Walls and fencing, here's another exam, just another example of objectivity. Under Materials and Color, 6521, one is a little better. It says, walls and fencing shall be complementary of the architecture. So complementary, what does that mean? Oh, it says here, by incorporating building colors and materials. So that's, tells you what you got to do to make it complementary. So it's, it stops being subjective at that point. But number two says, walls and fencing shall complement and be compatible with the overall landscape material palette and design theme, which is a little bit less good, because one person's idea of what's, what two colors are compatible may be very different from another. If you've ever taken a walk through Berkeley, you know what I'm talking about. View fencing definition is, is good. And I know that chain-link fences are excluded elsewhere in code, but I, I just want to make sure that when we define view fencing and we use a term such as, that a person doesn't get in their head that a chain-link fence, gosh, you can see through it, it's such as. So we want to be careful about that kind of language. And that's kind of what I have. So, how's everybody doing? Want to keep going? Okay, all right. So that was every chapter. What we would like to do now, I suppose, is just go back through the notes that Jennifer has and look at each note and see if we have consensus or if anybody wants to change anything or feels uncomfortable with it before we decide what to do with our recommendations. And Jennifer, when you're ready, but take your time.
Okay, yeah, April, if you can share my screen. Okay. We will start with my notes here. And then I'm going to go back once we get through this, because I did have some questions on the roofing section, but here. So the Contemporary Architectural Style recommended it be removed as an option citywide and PA1, and moved and replaced with, from what I had heard, was Spanish Mediterranean Ranch and Craftsman. As you can see, that is relatively close to what we currently have for the citywide. It includes all. It includes all of those types except for colonial. So we can maintain those four as a recommendation. If you just want to make it more streamlined, we could say that there's only going to be two areas within the city. Downtown is going to be very specific. And then everywhere else in the city, you can have Spanish Mediterranean Craftsman Ranch and Colonial. Or if you do want to have PA1, be a little bit more refined and have, you know, a smaller amount, we could stick with the four or even less.
All right, let's discuss that. Anita, I mean, Pastor Roberts.
I'm fine with the way it's presented. You've got four choices though for PA1. So you've left out the colonial and the Italian for PA1. I mean, as long as Queen Anne is not in it and Contemporary is not in it, I guess it's okay. So I'm fine with the way it stacks.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I'm in agreement with Pastor Roberts. Thank you.
Vice Chair Brand?
Yeah, I mean, it was kind of my idea, so I'm, I like the, I like that variety. I think it's a good mix. I think it would be appropriate for PA1.
Okay, I would add Italianate if the rest of the commission is agreeable. Italianate? All right, so with Italianate.
Next, we had talked about in the agenda report, increasing the objectivity. We've heard much on that tonight. And so a lot of these are just going to be general directions in which staff is going to have to go back and obviously do some work. But these are the bullets in which I heard tonight was try to eliminate areas that say such as, and instead have it better defined. Add stylistic definitions where appropriate, including suggestions of decorative tile, decorative rail, ornamental. Add roofing detail definitions and add a section in either Chapter Four or Five that defines roof materials or that defines the materials such as roofing materials, wall materials and colors, and better define the types and tiles of tiles and materials.
I'd like to jump on that just because the second one is that I'd like to refine stylistic definitions, like where we say things like decorative tile. I'd like it to be, instead of decorative, something more specific to the style where it's presented. And I by far consider this the most difficult thing we're asking you to do.
Okay, so yes, it's not just going to be what is a decorative tile, but it is what is a Spanish architectural decorative tile, what is a Mediterranean decorative tile? So it's going to be not general, it's going to be more specific to each architectural style. So it's going to be a different definition within each architectural style. Or, yes, or when we add the chapter and we define, then in the architectural style, we can say these are the types that are appropriate within this, but.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else have comments on this list? Yeah, we're good, thank you.
Okay. I'm now going to go into where we talked about each of the chapters. We'll go back to the roofing section in this little bit. Okay, so under the introduction, under the purpose, add context of Brentwood similar to what was in the existing guidelines and similar within the goals. You like the goals to say why we are doing this to help strengthen our defensibility of reasonable.
Just a thought here on this one, do we want to explicitly reference the first generation of the design standard to just say this was a, not a point of origin, but certainly it came into consideration when we made these standards for the ODS? Just, you know, I like breadcrumbs. I like being able to reference another document that kind of inspired another one, you know, so.
It's appropriate, yeah.
Okay, so add context, specific to Brentwood from the existing guidelines and reference the origin of the Brentwood guidelines and her historic character. And then add the goals to say why are we doing this? This will help strengthen our defensibility of reasonable standards.
Yeah, and these are the reasons other than, you know, the statements.
Yeah.
Okay, that's pretty good, everybody?
Yes. Okay, for Chapter Two, specifically 2.51 and 2.52, clarify our parks definition, potentially add clarifying language or goals and refer to specific code sections instead of just referencing the code. And then in seven or 2.7, refer to SB9 or government code sections. Actually, I'm going to highlight this and table this as well for a second. Because I think this is all going to go back into the planning commission section that I would like to refer back to. Okay, 4.11.1 says, oh, just clarify, it says entries may be located on the side of the building, but what is this an exception to? Why couldn't it face the side anyways?
I can help you with that. I would just, after you make the statement in 4.11.1, just say otherwise must conform to all standards for the particular entrance style that it is. I forget what we called those, the frontage style or?
Say that one more time?
Yeah, instead of trying to say why, why it couldn't otherwise, just say, you know, otherwise the entrance must conform to the, gosh, what are the styles in 4.11?
Okay, yeah, I understand.
I'm almost in it. Yeah.
Yeah.
The building entry type.
Okay, so 4.12.1.2 is just make sure the utilities are accurately defined. Then under noise attenuation, potentially reiterate building code and sequel requirements or investigate whether we can regulate through design standards and check if there are ceiling floor standards that can be added. Yeah, perfect. Okay. Chapter Five, colonial details should be more uniform in the number of details. It currently requires two while others require four to six. Add a section in, I'm going to add this to the top part, add a section to Chapter Four or Five defining materials, roof, wall and colors, better define types and materials. This was also up in the previous one when we talked about the definitions. An example of that is Spanish red fired clay tile roofs, common shapes, possibly define a new section. I think that was what we had above in the roof as well. Under each type, style, under each style, the types of roofs allowed, instead of just saying that they complement. I want to add that to a previous section and then better define standards and durability so that all materials need to be specified, so that not all materials need to be specified. This is in relationship to the wood siding, not just roofs, you know, but porch materials, railing details, siding, so standards for durability.
Sure, things like the wood needs to be treated and things like that.
Okay, and then Chapter Six, increase non-plant material minimum percentage, which is currently eight percent. Consider allowing zero escape with less plants. Add to the purpose our goals to maintain our arborist tree characteristics. Consider ember resistant zones for all areas within the city. I have to go back at 6.521, why I have compatible. The last ones.
Well, I was just talking about how when you said in the first paragraph, you said you define what complementary is. And then in the second paragraph, it doesn't so clearly define what complement and compatible is.
Okay, so better define compatible.
So this is an example, you know, of things that you can look through in the document to say, this is how it would be and this is how it would be. It's just an example.
Okay, so we good with Chapter Six?
Yeah, did we, did we talk about roofing materials like asphalt and composite?
That is what I am going to go to now.
Okay, sorry.
So I'm going to add these highlighted sections really quick, all the way to the top. Sorry if you're going to get dizzy really quick. Make sure. Okay, so in the staff report, I included a table that had all of the roof elements. There's multiple options that we haven't gotten into detail in what direction specifically you wanted to go. We could recommend certain types of roofing material, such as asphalt shingles be removed within certain types, recommend that only tile materials on architectural styles be allowed altogether. That would be a pretty straightforward, an easy way to clean up. We only want a tile and all materials. But some of the suggestions that we heard in the discussion was adding a section in Chapter Four and Five to define the roof materials and the tiles. Example, better define red fired clay roof tiles, the common shapes, maybe have illustrations of the shapes that we can refer to. Under each of the styles and the type, for the roof types. I think, yeah, add each, under each style, the roof types that are allowed. So in certain ones, we don't allow flat. In other ones, you know, we don't allow certain shed roofs and so forth. Your concern specifically were with shed and flat roofs and then possibly tie roof types into specific architectural styles. I think those last three are very similar.
I would, as far as the shed and the flat roof, I think that the concern was that like the whole house doesn't have that. But I think that having that definition there is good for uses as, like I said, like a porch roof could be a shed roof. So as long as, you know, that type could probably remain defined as long as it's not used as a, you know.
If we said something, if we like limited the, if we had an upper threshold for like less than, you know, 10% of the roof can be flat to suffice the patio cover or the, you know, whatever, but yeah, something like that. Jennifer can probably.
Yeah, we can definitely add some things like that has to be complementary and not the primary roof form. Specifically with flat roofs, though, the one just food for thought is that I believe the majority of you are considering single family residential homes. And the other aspect is high density multifamily. There are probably the majority of high density residential developments, once you start getting into four and five stories, are going to have parapets and flat roofs. They have accents, you know, tower treatments that have gabled roofs or accents. But I do believe that a lot of them are going to have flat roofs that are probably over 50% of the type of roof. So prohibiting them altogether, I think, might be difficult. It can definitely be done, but that's just food for thought to consider.
You could clarify in each style definition where a flat roof, you know, would be okay and where it wouldn't.
Yes, we can. And we can now also clarify that we don't want it at all in single family homes and we only allow it on stories three, four and five, if, you know, something like that. So we don't get a two story home that has a flat roof. You're only ever going to see it, you know, maybe if it's three, four, on the fifth floor, you know? Those are where the areas where it's not going to have as much of a visual appearance because that's where you're really not seeing what's behind that parapet. So we can definitely look into those aspects. We just need to get kind of a consensus on what your goal is. And if we put the goal in here, then I think we can work with the architects to come up with, with language to fit your goal.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, so I think this is the last thing is we just need clarification from the planning commission on the certain types of roofing materials that you would like to be removed. If there are certain ones that you want to be removed, such as asphalt shingles or the composite, you know, we can strike composite from any of the roofing materials, we could strike asphalt shingles. So that might be one area. Or if you want to dive down into, we can strike it from certain ones and still allow it in others. But this is where we need the last bit of direction.
With, with permission of the?
Well, I think that you were spot on about the shingles and that synthetic piece. I just would like to see that go away altogether. I don't know if it has a place in, in any of this. I've, I think that you open up yourself when we're talking about cost to, especially with, with things like shingles where things will be placed on a low budget and it could really do a disservice to the overall project. So to just remove it entirely would, would have the developer work with other types of items aside from something synthetic, which I still don't know what that is, and the shingle piece. I've seen those and they, low budget, it can really do a disservice to the project. That's just my, that's just my observation. I'd rather not have it than to have it and have, and have a developer have access to it.
Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Agreed.
Okay, and Vice Chair Brand?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that is that, yeah, our original design standard also called out that we want these roofs and we see it categorically as the most common roof type, roof material type. And so I think that just adds more evidence here that that's probably the way to go.
Yeah, especially for asphalt shingles. What I, what I would like to see is additional roofing tiles that we, that were mentioned in the original design document that kind of got lost, the concrete and what was the other one? Ceramic and, well, I lost the other word, but yeah. I just, I want to definitely look at the materials there that have traditionally been used in Brentwood. And we might need another go around once we see the list of roofing tiles available to us to really nail down what we want to see in each style. So I, you know, you can write the whole list, but just because it's on the list, if it's not allowed in any style, you know, then we can take things off the list. It's the same thing with the roof shapes. I mean, you can have all the roof shapes you want in the list of roof shapes as long as each style specifically says which roof shapes you can use for what, which we don't have right now. We have sort of some of that. Which we don't have right now. We have sort of some of that. Did we, did we get that on the list that we wanted to, to say which roof shapes you can use in each style? Okay, I'm starting to lose track myself. It's, it's a lot.
Well, that's pretty comprehensive. What you provided us. Thanks, Jennifer.
All right.
Is there anything else we'd like to, any other chapter we need to go through again? Or should we, I mean, I see a very comprehensive series of edits that we've made in addition to some kind of options as far as how I think staff will probably interpret based off of our wishes here. I'm ready to make a motion if we.
Okay, before we make a motion, I just wanted to have a quick discussion about how we wanna approach this. My, my suggestion was, would be that we don't make a resolution on approval at this time. That would instead, we would make a motion asking staff to come back with the revision. And then we would have the opportunity to do a resolution at that time. Is that kind of where you were going? So everybody?
Yeah, the, because I don't think we've quite defined in completion the, what the text amendments are as I'm reading the, the motion that we have on the redlined agenda. So. Maybe Katie can help guide us here as far as the, how we, how we should proceed this way.
So I think you have a couple of options here. The first and most expeditious might be to have Jennifer capture all of this direction as, as you've just provided consensus on. And package that all and send it on to the city council with everything that's here so that staff has the benefit of council's direction on these items as well. Because if staff goes back and works with a consultant to make all of these changes, but then the council decides they wanna keep some of the original language, then, then we've kind of gone back and forth. So one idea would be to bundle all of this up and say, the planning commission recommends approval of the design guidelines with the following changes. And then if the city council concurs, then staff has, you know, clear direction from the ultimate decision maker as to how to go back and work within the confines of the consultant's existing budget to get all that done. Another option would be to ask staff to go back and work with the consultant and make all of these changes. The only thing I'm not sure of there is whether the council will concur with, with all of these. And if they don't, then we've, you know, driven down the consultant's budget even more. And those are the sort of tensions at work here. So you've got a couple of options and we're happy to help you craft a motion in either direction.
I have a comment. So we are the planning commission. And kind of the planning commission is a subset of the city council. And part of our mandate is to take some of the work off of the city council and do it. And so my feeling is that we should present them with a document that we support. They can, they can certainly refer back and see what was done. But I think that the planning commission is kind of obligated to do the work and present the city council with a product. And then, and then they can further refine it if they wish. But we need to, we need to do the work so that they don't have to. I mean, the city council, their meetings, they have so many things that they do. And I think that it would be appreciated if we did the lion's share and presented them with something that, that is, that they know that we've, as a, as a body have approved and hopefully will be fully attended next time. And that would just be my perspective on it. I, I understand the, the opposing thought that, well, if they wanted to go back to how it originally was. But that could be done because I'm sure that these documents are digital. And if they wanted to undo anything, then the original pages could just be substituted back in. I don't know how much the consultants charge, but it doesn't seem like that it would be a, a major effort to replace a page back with an original page. So that, that would be my thought of it. So with that, I'll leave you to make a motion.
Well, I'd like to see the document with the recommendations that we've given Jennifer come back to us so that we can take a final look at it and approve it. And then send it on to city council. That would be my recommendation. Well, that's, we had a motion. I'm not making a motion.
You wanna make the? I can make the motion. You wanna make the motion? Are you in concurrence with that?
Somebody make the motion.
A quick rebuttal.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll go before you, if you wanna go first.
Yeah, so I do realize, you know, we have a balance of expediency as well as thoroughness. And I applaud us for this evening as far as our thoroughness. Because I mean, it's you especially, Chair Floor. Your details on the, on the architectural styles are pretty impressive. So, you know, that being said, I, I, in looking at the revisions that we provided to Jennifer, I don't see a lot of, maybe this is just my perspective, I don't see a lot of variation, much deviation from our intent that could come as a result of the proposed revisions. And so I, in an effort to, you know, continue the ball ruling, I feel comfortable just essentially making these recommendations and then saying, you know, you know, council to make that. And I would hope that, the last part here is that, I would hope that council has the perspective to, you know, watch both meetings and understand that we're, the amendments that we've made, or proposed amendments that we've made had its origins from a variety of sources, whether it be us individual commissioners or from other reference documents and things like that. So that way, at least the, you know, the continuity through our proposals are pretty clear. So. Yeah, so, yeah, I wanna give, sorry, Commissioner John Jones, sorry. Why don't you?
No, I just would say, I, I am inclined to agree. I completely understand where Chair Floor is coming from. I think it is our due diligence to make sure that we're taking the workload as much as possible off of our city council. On the flip side, what I would say is, you know, I think we've done a lot of that tonight. I think the notes are very thorough. I think all of that will be brought. And then, you know, the council will ultimately decide if they're going to keep the notes that we, the changes that we've, we've recommended, or they will not. And I think staff will do a good job with that and will bring that to the council. So I think just from the spirit of being a little bit more expeditious, keeping this ball moving, thinking about some potentially budgetary concerns from, from our consultants, I just, I feel comfortable taking this to the next step and allowing this to, to, to continue. With complete respect of what you're saying, and I understand that. I just, I think we've, we've, we've done the work. So now I think we can, we can move it forward. That's my thoughts.
And for clarity, what, if that is the direction that we ultimately go, I can, we can go through this one more time if you wanna see the language. But staff can actually add this word for word verbatim, what is here tonight as an attachment to the resolution as your adopted approval, consistent with exhibit. This would be exhibit.
Okay, then we need to finish the work tonight. We haven't yet identified which tiles we wanna put on which buildings. I'll say one more thing. And that is that having not gone through the thought process that we went through and the debate and discussion and multiple, you know, meetings going through this material, I'm not sure that all members of the city council will look at the list of things that we're recommending and will understand necessarily the, the impetus behind them. Certainly, I didn't, I didn't approve those, those notes without, with the understanding that they were gonna be presented to the city council raw as is. I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that they're explanatory enough of the thought process behind them. And I believe that once we have the list of materials at least, then we can go through the styles and apply those, those materials. And once we see the stylistic descriptions, that would give us something that we could really resolve on. That's my thinking on it. Again, I just don't, I don't see the city council just going through that list the way it's written and understanding, you know, what the thought process was behind each of those items. And yeah, they could watch the meeting, but it's, you know, hours of material. And why not just present them with an ODS that they could look at and decide if it's worthwhile. That's just my thought process.
But during the presentation to the city council, would those incorporation, but would that all be given step by step? Or would it just be expected for the city council to read?
There, there are multiple options. What? Well, staff would provide them with this comprehensive attachment. Within the staff report, most likely what will happen is staff will go through potential changes within each chapter. And we would most likely create a staff report that goes chapter by chapter. We also would most likely have the three main contentious topics summarized in its own section, similar, in a lot more detail than what we provided in the staff report tonight. But that would go into detail. Some of the easier, straightforward sections, like, you know, adding the Brentwood context and the goals. Things like that, that, that might be pretty straightforward and streamlined. Staff would most likely provide examples of red lines of what that would look like. But there are a lot of areas in here that I think staff may require direction before going and making all of these. So it would, I, I would most likely guess would be more than a one-stop process at the city council. It would most likely entail, because of how substantial these recommended changes are, that we provide these to council, get directions in which areas they want us to spend staff time and resources to move forward with. And then we would provide them with a comprehensive red line at probably a second hearing. Because there are substantial, putting together just even the definitions chapter and the examples is probably something that, you know, I mean, in reality, could be a whole chapter and on its own, that, that could be substantial. And so some of these things are going to take some time. And I think we might request additional direction before moving forward. But maybe Eric can go further into it.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I was just gonna say, I, I think it really comes down to at this point, it sounds like there's a little bit of a, divide might, might not be the right word, but a level of comfort, right? With the comments you've made tonight. So is the commission overall comfortable with this list that's been generated? And then having staff present that in whatever format to the council? And as Jennifer said, we could go a lot of different routes with that. How staff reports get crafted, it's, it's kind of an art, not really a science. Or is the level of comfort such that you would want to see, and this is what I'm getting from Chairperson Floor, to see the document back with the changes, so you can actually see the changes? That's really kind of up to the commission at this point.
Okay.
Oh, and the other thing I just wanted to mention real quick is that if indeed you wanna see it again, and you're not comfortable actually making a recommendation tonight, one thing we should talk about is when it does come back. Because this is a public hearing that was continued once. It's certainly gonna require a level of work, both on the consultant's side and the staff's side. So on the one hand, I'd love to, if it does get continued, I'd love to be able to pick a date. But I don't wanna tie us down either, so we might need to re-notice it, which is okay. But so you can continue it to a date certain, which makes me a little nervous. Or you could just continue it to an unspecified date, and when we're ready, we'll bring it back. So hopefully that makes sense.
All right, well, I do wanna jump in here. The last time that we said, okay, we'll, we'll have you put a list in the staff report, it, it didn't seem satisfactory to me. And we had to go back and have it, put the language put into the proposal. And then it slid right through city council. They didn't have any problem with it. So I think that we would do a better service to our city council by doing the work and presenting them with an objective design standard that is truly objective and has the improvements that we've suggested for it. I don't think it's more expeditious to make them go back and approve all those changes one by one. And again, like Jennifer said, you'll have to bring it to them. They'll have to approve the changes. Then you'll have to do the work anyway if they do approve them. And frankly, for the city council, there is just this factor that it's just easier to approve the document as it is. So I feel pretty strongly that we need to have one more round of this and see the document with the changes. And that's kind of where I'm at on it right now.
Very good point. And it sounded like the, we do need an extra meeting, regardless if it's us or if it's council. So someone has to look at this first revision again before it then goes for, you know, a final approval. So what I'm hearing from Chair Floor is that we would like to be able to, paraphrasing, of course, we would like to be able to put a, like a finished product kind of stamp on this document to say like, this is our formal recommendation from, and it's just with a nice little bow on it. I absolutely support that, especially if we've got, if it has to be another meeting. And yeah, I, I think we, you know, we're a special, we're a specialty arm of council's purview to, you know, with respect to planning. And so it makes sense that we have the brain power and space to go, go through a document with quite a fine tooth comb. So yeah, that, I'm, yeah, I think you've, I think you've shifted my mind.
I get it. I'm, I'm still not there. Again, I, I think we've done it. And we, we're providing a recommendation. They have, they will have our recommendations with the revisions. I get the concern about it potentially being missed or not looked at. But I mean, I, I, I think staff will do their due diligence to, to, to ensure that these, these recommendations we're making, which is what they are, to, to, to the city council, for them to decide whether they will take what we are recommending is changed or they will not. And I think if it's kind of done in that step-by-step space, it allows the city council to be able to ultimately decide whether they're gonna take our changes or not take our changes. So I, I'm, I'm more inclined to go down the, more the expeditious route because I think the work has been done tonight. And yeah, I'm just still not there, so.
I'd like to ask a question, then, just on a more general kind of appear. I'd like to ask a question, then, just on a more general, kind of, a peer basis. Why is it important that the city council consider our changes separate from the rest of the document? What does that accomplish, you know, for the city or for moving our goals forward? It's, why, why does it matter whether they consider a document that was done by staff and then some revisions that were made by us, rather than just a document that was made by staff and the planning commission in collaboration?
Is that for me?
It is.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, how I'm doing this as, is we were given a document by staff and consultants. We were asked to look at that document and to say either, "We like it as is," or "We want to make changes." Tonight, we gave, I think, a very thorough breakdown of what we think should be changed within the document, presenting it to the city council in that format that says, "This was the original document that was made, here's what we, here's what we're asking to change," versus just presenting them with just something that was just changed. I would like them to know what we are recommending to be changed from the original document. So, that's why I think if it's being presented more in that format, we're giving them the step-by-step of exactly what was done. That's how I would want to see it, and I could be, I could be wrong, but that's how I see it, right? Is, I would like to know, okay, you had this document, these were the changes that the planning commission recommended change, because this is what it was, this is what they'd like it to be, do we want it to be the way it was, or do we want it to be the way that they changed it to? So, I would like to personally see that in that format, versus in just a finished document that just came from staff, consultant, planning commission. I would like to know what was changed, personally for me. So that's why I stay where I am.
I just, I don't see the value. What difference it makes to the city council who made what revisions to that document?
If I may?
We'll agree to disagree, then.
So, what I'm hearing, and I see it, city council can take a final document, bypass all of the details that went into that document and say yea or nay, and that would just be the end of it. Or, city council can actually look at the notes and see the changes that were made in the document prior to its finality, and have a discussion about that. And so, there's the variances right there. Sending them with a final document kind of, it doesn't prohibit them from tearing it apart, but it's done, so why spend time undoing it to redo it? Or, they're going to be presented with notes and adjustments and edits, and now comes a discussion, which kind of forces them to take a look at, well, why are they excluding IE contemporary? So now is the discussion, and now it'll go back and forth, as Jennifer has communicated, possibly in two sessions. So it really does come down to it being expeditious, and here's the final document, okay, it's done, approve it, or here is, here are our notes, and this is what we're rendering here. This is, this is our thought behind, we don't want contemporary, there's a note there, and there's going to be a discussion about that. It's not going to be expeditious. They're going to take the time to wonder, well, what was, why did the planning commission say they don't want contemporary in PA 1? So there's the variant, that's the difference. And, I don't know that I want to think for city council, okay, they're going to do what they want to do, however they want to do it. I don't want to get in the weeds like that. I do hear both sides of this, and I'm inclined, I don't want to see this thing come back. Frankly, I don't want to tear this thing apart again. That's my feeling. I think, like, I'm with Mr. Jones here, Commissioner Jones, I, we've done the work. But on the other hand, I don't want city council to take our efforts and tear it apart and it come back completely different from the work that we did tonight. So, I'm kind of conflicted.
And I appreciate all those thoughts. I'm just mindful of what the planning commission is and how it's defined in code, what our job is, and these are our decisions to make. We make them in advisory, but we are expected to do the work, and I don't want to turn in half a piece of work and make my boss finish it. I feel very strongly about what we do here. I think that we provide value to the city and to the city council, and I think that the work we do here has weight, and it's not, it's not like we were tinkering with it.
No.
You know, I mean, it is our job to look at these things and to make recommendations, and to collaborate with staff, and to do all of these things. We're not here to rubber stamp anything, we're not here to, we're not in competition with staff, we're just making the document better, and I think that that's what our job actually is. And I feel like if we turn in, you know, like a half-done document, then we create this false concept that staff and the planning commission are, you know, like, not working together on planning, when what's actually happening is we're collaborating together with staff, and staff has done an amazing job tonight, and I think that we just need to finish the work and turn it in, and they can do what they want with it, but at least they've got something that they can just up or down on, and it's complete. The way it is now, it's not ready to go. So, if we send it to them with just a bunch of recommendations, then they have to do all the work of putting in, picking out what recommendations they want to do, put it all in, blah, blah, blah. It's not their job, it's ours.
But don't we want them to know what we recommend is changed?
They have the video, they all watch it, they know what was changed, and it can be documented by staff, what we did here tonight, there's going to be minutes, there's going to be notes, there's going to be all kinds of ways that they can determine if they want to, what we changed, or they can just accept the work of the planning commission that they appointed to do this job, and say, "Okay, this is the job they did," you know? I don't see any, I don't see any difference in sending them a completed document that is fully objective from us. I just don't get the point of making them go back through and do it again, and have to decide all of those things, and look at the whole document as it is, and then decide on top of that if the changes are appropriate, let them, let them see what we've done, let them have the document, and let them go through it. Again, we're here to do a job. If we're not, if we're not going to do the job, if we're going to say, "Oh, this is what we thought," and, you know, not turning in the document, why are we even here?
I don't know if it's fair to say we didn't do the job, though, because we did do the job.
We are doing the job.
We did it tonight. We laid out all the notes, we showed them every, we're laying out exactly what it is that we want to see changed, and then those changes are being presented. So my point more is, is why do we, why not just present that document with the changes for them to decide what they're going to keep and what they're not going to keep?
Because it's up to us to make sure those changes were implemented as we intended.
Could I offer a middle course for consideration? Because I think what we've talked about so far is sending on the document with the list that Jennifer has noted and you have signed off on, or having the consultant make all these changes and bring you back sort of a 2.0 version, right? Those have been sort of the two options. What about a middle option whereby the consultant and staff work together to develop a red line that shows all the changes, and that red line moved forward to council so that they could see the original work, but also see all the work that you had done, and they could choose, yes, we like everything that planning commission suggested, you know, keep all the red lines, or they could say, "We like some of these red lines, and some of it we want to revert to the original," or, "We like some of it, and we don't like others, and we're going to make further changes all on our own," because then that would capture all of your direction tonight, and they could see what had been changed between the original and what you had recommended, and it would still be a more complete document, as I think you're envisioning Chair Flore, for them to look at comprehensively and not be comparing to a list of changes that was attached to the staff report. I don't want to get in your way, but it just might be another way to think about it.
That's an interesting idea, and I don't object to a red line at all, but I still want to see it before it goes to city council, because I want to make sure that the changes that are in there are the changes that this body envisioned. You know, we want to see that the work that is done matches what we asked for, and the city council would feel the same way if they sent something back. I don't see any point in making the city council go through all that, it's just, I think it's our job. And then we return, we return a finished product to them, and then they can do what they want with it. That's how I see it.
Okay, so if I'm hearing Chair Flore, we're going to go ahead and, if we're in agreement, we're not going to make a recommendation tonight. We're going to ask staff to bring this back to us at some point, and I guess because it's gone on for so long and there's no time limit on this, we can see this come back to us in February or March. I mean, not putting a time limit on it, but, not putting a date on it, but you say that it would be tough to give a date certain, so just to kind of leave it open. And I figure it's been years, at least a year or two, so there's no real hurry in getting this box checked, but it would come back with all the recommendations in a packet for us to take a look at and make sure that everything that we worked on, and we do do the work, just to be very clear, I want it on the record, we did the work tonight, and we do work when we come here, we don't rubber stamp anything, we don't do anything half-baked, at least not on my watch. I haven't done it, and I don't do it. So, that being said, it would come back sometime in February or March or whenever as a packet for us to take a look at, to ensure that everything we talked about this evening is in the packet, and it would also give us another opportunity to make more changes. So this is a very fluid document. This is something, when we talk about doing the work, we could go on for some time with this document. This is not a document, when it comes back to us, that we might be satisfied, or we might see something that we didn't catch in this work, and then do exactly what we're doing tonight and bring it back yet another time. And so, I want the, on the record, that this is a fluid document, it is not going to find its way back to council anytime soon if we go this route. And I happen to be in agreement that we probably will keep this going for some time, but we've got the work, we've begun the work, and that's my take on this evening session, is that we've begun the work, and that is the key word, "begun." And that's my thought.
I'll add one more thing. This document originally was supposed to go through LED before it came to us, through no fault of mine. LED hasn't met all summer long, and so, we're tasked with doing LED's job and our job, and so I want to make sure it's done. And, again, I feel strongly that this is the right way to proceed.
So, what's your recommendation? I sense that this is not going to counsel in a nice packet, so how do we move forward to move on to the next item?
I'm ready to make a, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah, the only thing I would say before you make a motion, Chair Flore, is that if you do want to continue the item again, and have it come back with showing the changes, right, in a red line format, that you just don't do it to a specified date, because we really can't commit to that right now.
Understood.
Understood. With that, I'm not sure that I have it, but I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, because we'd be here all night. I'd like to move that we instruct staff to come back with a red line document with the changes as we've recommended for our final approval, and we can do that at a date uncertain. Can I get a second?
I don't know about that being, may I say, I don't know that it's a final approval, because it could come back and there could be some other changes we want to make in that document. So I would take that word "final" out and find another word, come back to us and for review.
Yeah, I think that's understood.
Okay, yeah, understood. And can I get a second?
Mm-hmm. I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ah, wow, okay. We have one more item tonight, E3, to amend Chapter 17.725 Affordable Housing of the Brentwood Municipal Code to increase the affordable housing obligation for projects from 13% to 18% as directed by the city council. And we have Sylvia with us tonight, hi.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Tonight, I'd like to provide a brief presentation on the city council's direction of staff regarding the amendment to the city's affordable housing ordinance. At the March 12 city council meeting, the council directed staff to bring forth a future agenda item to discuss options to increase the affordable housing ordinance 13% requirement. The city council directed staff to provide information related to an increase in the affordability requirement to 15% or 20%, and information on possible impacts on the city's housing development and state and federal housing laws. At the May 27 city council meeting, staff presented informational report regarding the affordable housing ordinance, including impacts to housing development and state and federal laws as requested by the city council. Staff's informational report included information on the current affordable housing ordinance at 13%, including allocation of affordability percentages and other policies in place, information on the regional housing needs allocation arena for Brentwood, information on active housing developments and affordability requirements, and on current state and federal housing laws, information on what an increase to 15% or 20% would yield in affordable units hypothetically, and information on conducting an economic feasibility study to support an increase in affordability requirement above 15% and its timeline and cost. Upon conclusion of staff's informational report, staff requested direction from the city council on amending the affordable housing ordinance and whether to increase the affordability percentage requirement of 13%, and if so, by how much, and if an increase is recommended, how to allocate the new affordability percentage requirement to the affordable income categories, and whether to conduct an economic feasibility study to support an increase in the affordability percentage requirement above 15%. At the same meeting, the city council held a discussion regarding the amendment of the affordable housing ordinance and directed staff to prepare a draft amendment to the affordable housing ordinance, amending the affordability requirement to 18%, and the allocation of affordability percentages to 9% moderate income, 5% to low income, and 4% to very low income. Do not prepare a feasibility study, as one was recommended, but not required for the proposed amendments, and keep all other requirements and alternatives of the existing ordinance in place and move forward with the amendment. forward with the amendment process and present the draft amendment of the Affordable Housing Ordinance to the Planning Commission for Review and Recommendation. This slide shows a side-by-side comparison of the council's direction to increase the affordability requirement. The current Affordable Housing Ordinance requires a 13% obligation, which applies to affordable ownership and rental units. The proposed 18% amendment will apply to affordable ownership and rental units and keeping all other sections, requirements, and alternatives of the existing ordinance in place. This concludes the presentation. Staff would like to answer any questions, then ask the Planning Commission for the recommendation regarding the amendment to the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Council Erin Lapparolary from the Law Office of Gulf Harbor and Liptman is also in attendance via Zoom to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Does the Planning Commission have any clarifying questions for staff? We'll start with
Neither this time.
No?
Other, the call-out where it indicated the difference between owner and rental-type affordability allocation, is, there's no specific, actually, this is a question, excuse me, is there a specific division amongst those income brackets that denote owner versus rental, or are they just all kind of mixed together?
In regards to the incomes is what defines very low, low, and moderate, and that applies to rental and ownership, if I'm understanding your question.
I guess what I'm saying is, let's take moderate, for example, is that there's no specific distinction between owner versus rental percentage within that 9% as presented here?
No, this is both ownership and rental would be the moderate percentage for ownership and rental.
Because we're not, I guess what I'm saying is, we're not saying that 48% of that 9% is an owner-based property versus, you know, 52% is a rental allocation.
No.
No, okay. Just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
And I have no questions. At this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person. April, do we have any?
At this time, we have no speakers in person. We'll go to Zoom. If you have any questions, please raise your hand for this item. Excuse me, comments? There are no hands raised in Zoom.
All right. Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And is there any discussion? We'll start with Pastor Roberts. We've been doing it all night.
Sure. Well, I'm really happy that we are doing this, keeping up with some of our neighbors like Lafayette and Berkeley. I think it's needed, and I appreciate it. I really do appreciate it. I know we've been talking about it for some time, and it's finally here. I did want to just make a note, and I don't know, maybe one of you can answer this question. So I'm looking at the approved and active residential projects. How embarrassing. I'm looking at Bridle Gate 272, and they've got 10%. Am I reading that incorrectly in terms of their percentage of this effort, affordable housing? They're only giving 10% of the affordable housing? Is, am I reading that correctly?
When the project was approved, it was approved under the previous ordinance at 10%. So that's why their affordability is at 10%.
I see. And then I'm looking at the development applications in review. So these 13%ths, are they grandfathered, or are they going to go into, if this is approved, if this goes all the way to a final 18, will these now become 18%? Or they are grandfathered in at 13?
They're grandfathered in where, when the project was approved under that specific ordinance at 13%, they will be at 13%. And that is, the ordinance reads currently that when the application has been completed and approved.
Let me ask you a question, and maybe this is a legal question. So if an application for somehow in one way or another expires, they haven't, you know, they've got to go back and reapply, okay? Then what happens now is applicable? In other words, they might have 13% because their application is active, but no building, no shovel to the dirt, and it expires. So when they go back and do a reapplication, if this passes, they will be held at 18%? Or are they grandfathered in just because?
Oh, go ahead and have Eric help me with that one.
Yeah.
Whether that project lapses, if they come back, do they get to keep the old affordable housing percentage, or if they would be subject to the new affordable housing percentage that would now pertain to applications that were coming in? They would be required to meet the new requirements. And we've got Erin Lapparolary on the phone here as well, but there is a difference between that and projects that have a long lead time but have extensions granted to them, say, under the State Subdivision MAP Act that prolong the life of the project. So we are mindful of those things as well.
Okay, all right. That's my question, and thank you for answering it. And so, yeah, I'm really happy that we've come into the real world here. I hate to use the word "affordable" when nothing is affordable, and so this really does bring us closer to what affordability should look like. So I'm grateful. That's all I have.
Commissioner Jones?
Well said. I would agree with that completely, and it's good to see the percentage increase. So that's it.
Vice Chair Brandt?
Yeah, especially from when, how was it, 10% just a few years ago? I mean, and now that we're nearly double that with a proposal like this, it's admirable. And I do like, especially the, now that we've divided the very low and low incomes into their own categories, it's nice to see the 4% and 5% according on that. So definitely giving access to a lot of our community that has, Commissioner Roberts described, is nothing is affordable. It's, yeah, it's a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Brentwood City Council on finally accomplishing this. I know that when they went to 13%, that there were a lot of obstacles to going higher, and they seem to have overcome them. And unlike some theoretical benefit to possibly increasing the supply several years down the road, just doing build, baby, build, the way to make affordable housing is to make affordable housing, and that's what we're doing here in Brentwood. I'm so proud of my city, my City Council for doing this. And I want to thank you too, Sylvia, for your contribution in this. And with that, I'll hear a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission, well, Resolution 25017, the resolution of the Planning Commission recommending that the City Council adopt the ordinance approving a zoning tax amendment to the Brentwood Municipal Code, RZ 25003, amending Chapter 17.725 of the city, a Brentwood Municipal Code, Affordable Housing.
Give me a second. Did we, did we do something wrong?
Did we want to include the 13% to 18%? I don't know if I heard that.
Oh, I thought it was already in there, but I can do that.
No problem.
13% to 18% is directed by City Council.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Informational reports, transplan? Vice Chair Brandt?
So there was a budget discussion as far as some of the allocation for East County public transit. There was a quick discussion regarding whether those funds should go into the Try My Ride. If any of you've had it before, it's quite good, but versus a burgeoning, I'll call it, program in which schools will, could potentially have some funds to inspire the elementary schools in particular, to have kids walk, bike, and carpool to school as a means of alleviating congestion on the road. So we all know how around here that elementary schools can be a little bit tricky in terms of morning traffic. I do it every day, so I understand. And in addition to that, just a few updates in terms of some, a bit more ambitious, long-term projects that aren't funded at this time, but a bit more adventurous thinking in terms of how we continue to add value in the transportation sector to East County residents. So that's it.
Thank you. We have design review. Commissioner Jones?
We have not met.
We have land use and development committee, and we also have not met. And Brentwood Municipal Code Review Committee?
Have not met.
And we have kind of a trifecta there. Moving on, do we have any future agenda item requests?
None on my part.
Seeing none. G2 requested items, future agenda item request from Chairperson Flore regarding staff's process for evaluating applications and formulating recommendations, and the Planning Commission's role in reviewing them. That the Planning Commission consider the request from Chairperson Flore regarding staff's process for evaluating applications and formulating recommendations, and the Planning Commission's role in reviewing them. And I think that tonight was kind of a a little bit of an interesting exposition as to why this is needed, is this was my request, I'll explain it. So what I haven't seen too much of, we go to the commissioner academies, and we get a lot of training, we, you know, what I haven't really gotten out of all of this training is a good feel for how planning processes an application. They see an application, that the applicant comes in, they help the applicant understand what they need to do, they process the application somehow, and they bring the application to us, and there's a recommendation, there's a bunch of documentation. And I'm curious about how all of that works, and I'm particularly curious about the criteria that they use for making a recommendation. I should talk to you directly, Eric, about this. For example, to what level of completeness does the application have to be completely perfectly conformant, or can you make, will you make a recommendation to us where there are things that are not conformant? That nonetheless, that there's some value in the application? I just want to, I just want to hear from staff what the process is to make recommendations on applications. So that is my explanation of my request, and I certainly would work with staff with any kind of clarification if this item moves forward. At this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person. April, if we have anybody?
We have no speakers in person. We'll go ahead and go to Zoom, and it looks like I just have two commissioners in there, so there is no hands raised.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by the commission?
None for me.
None for me, thank you.
I mean, I'm honestly curious, too. It's, I almost, I would, no disrespect, it made me think of the walkthroughs that Mr. Rogers used to do, where he puts it on the painting, and you get to see how a can of soup is made. Like, it's very intriguing, so I'm very interested, anyway. That's my thought.
You're a little younger than I am. Mr. Rogers is an American icon, but a little bit after my time. Okay. And, yeah, the discussion for me is just, as I said, I just don't always perceive, when I look at a staff report and I go through all the items, and I find things, and we know this, right, that I'll find things, other planning commissioners will find things that seem non-conformant to us, and there will be a staff recommendation to accept the application. And I want to know, we're doing it wrong, or if there are extenuating circumstances, if there's opinions? I just want to know what goes into the sauce to make the application come to us and with a recommendation. And I think this is a mysterious process for people. I know that, Eric, you and I have been interacting about staff decisions since 2017 with No Reason, it was on in Deer Ridge, and so I think we have a lot of trust between us, and I trust you, and I value the work that you do. And we have, we just have these mismatches, and I'm really interested in figuring out where they come from and how we can work together better on things. And so I would leave the format to you, but I just would love to have some sort of a presentation. But we, yeah, would you like to make a comment before we go to vote?
I would, actually.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, the staff report for tonight was pretty generic, right? It follows the format for other future agenda item requests that the commission's brought up, but there was a line at the very end of the background section, it was on page two, which reads, "As described, the request should involve only minimal time and resources, but a more time-intensive or expensive request would need to be referred to the City Council for consideration." So you might recall, there have been certain items that staff has brought to the commission, the commission has then decided, yes, we'd like to move forward with this, and we're going to do so by pushing it to the council for their consideration, to then direct, to then direct staff time and resources. As I heard the request last time and further explained tonight, excuse me, I don't see that being the case for this particular one. I think what we can do is craft probably a short staff report, right, summarizing what's happened in the last couple of meetings, and then kind of giving an overview of how the process works, making a presentation, and then just having kind of a back-and-forth discussion, and then just seeing where that leads. I think it might satisfy the chair and the rest of the commission at that point, but we're happy to discuss further as that meeting occurs. Does that kind of sound like what you were asking for?
Yeah, it sounds exactly like what I was asking for. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
All right. And with that, do we have a motion? I guess I could make a motion. I make a motion to request that the City Council, or actually, it does, the motion references the City Council, and given your comment just now, how should I phrase that?
What City Council got to do with it?
Yeah, I could, I could just make a motion to
Sorry. Yeah, I would just make a motion to direct staff to bring the item back for a future Planning Commission meeting, and you can just get a motion on that.
All right, thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to request that staff bring the item back to a future Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Let's see, what have we got? The next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for November 4, 2025 at 7:00 The next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for November 4th, 2025 at 7:00 PM, and will be held here at the council chambers located at 150 City Parkway. I need one more motion.
I motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Okay, good night. Always. Okay. I gotta get out of here.
3 o'clock in the morning, you wake up.
Oh, nice to see you too.
All right.
Likewise.
She's on vacation.
Well, we miss you when you're not here.
She's great, though.